Are you ready?
We are ready, yes.
All right, the time is now 5:35 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the session were Carl Snicker, Dana Brinker, Jim Harper, Amy Gardner, Ron Wakefield, Tyler George, Gloria Koschberger, and Lindsay Holverson. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that there was any proper, improper discussion or improper action in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is to adjourn the executive session and to call to order the Silverton Housing Authority. We'll take a minute.
And I'll be ready.
Lindsay, we're just switching over.
Oh yeah, the owl is like going crazy, moving around.
It's really cute because when you first turn it on, it goes, oh.
The counties is like, doesn't work very well. And every time we're in the planning commission, it's just like no one can hear each other. It's, they're great. Yeah, they don't work that well sometimes.
So for anybody online, we're just taking a few minutes to switch over from our first meeting to now the Silverton Housing Authority. We will be calling it to order in a couple of minutes. Okay, Anne, are you ready?
I can give you a few more minutes.
Can you put out me analyst and also back Jones analyst? Let me try mine again.
Are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay, great. All right, it is November 12th, Tuesday. The time is 5:40 and I'll call to order a meeting of the Silverton Housing Authority. All trustees are present along with Anne Chase and Melina Marx and Glory Koschberger will be back. Thanks, Anne. I'm gonna kick it over to you.
Awesome. Um, okay, so today is a meeting about the Anvil Town Homes. And the goal of this evening is to discuss the project and also make a formal decision to apply for the Colorado Division of Housing's Proposition 123 funding. And we are joined by our development team, tributary development, and I will introduce them shortly. But we've prepared a presentation to sort of explore the motivation behind this project, where we are now, where we're trying to go, and how we're gonna get there. If no one is in person, but if you are on Zoom, we are going to write down your name. We have to keep track of who all is here, regardless of if you talk or not, just to make sure, just to report to the grant.
And we will have, as a public hearing, we will have public comment at the end.
Yeah.
Right, we'll have an opportunity for public.
Hearing, but it's a public meeting.
Public meeting.
We'll have public comment at the end of this evening. And yeah, by the end of this presentation, we have to illustrate the goals of this project and how it's gonna make a positive impact on our community. Let's start with the why. There's a housing crisis at the national level, the state level, and the local level. Very lighthearted and fun way to start for meetings. There's a national housing shortage. This has started in the 1980s. The construction of entry-level homes has been decreasing since then. It bumped up a little bit in the early 2000s, back down with the 2008 recession. And then in COVID, it really bumped those numbers down even further. And so we just aren't seeing the housing supply grow proportionately with the demand. And millennials are now the largest demographic and they're ready to buy homes. In Colorado, our largest or fastest growing population is sort of our senior population. They have stayed and aged in place. When they were younger, the housing market was more dynamic. They were moving around, they were employed, they're having kids. And now the market has kind of stalled out and they have aged in the homes that they raised their families in. Their kids are gone, so there's a lot of like open bedrooms. They're not really downsizing because they're not able to. So the housing market is just kind of having a hard time welcoming in the new workforce. And at a local level, this graph illustrates, the green is wage increase and the yellow and orange is condo and single-family prices. And our wage increase has not kept up since the pandemic with the property values, which we are all very aware of. And I think the difference between condo prices and single-family prices here are attributed to our condos in South County in Castade. So that's where those condos are coming from. And sort of what that feels like at a local level is that our workforce is facing housing challenges. So this is from our housing needs assessment. And employers are saying that their employees have challenges with limited rental housing, lack of starter homes, no affordable housing. And we're really seeing this impact our economy and sort of the goals that we have as a community. And then this just further illustrates what people do if they can't find housing. So we're really like facing the possibility of losing our workforce and we have been. It's been difficult. And so we need to expand housing choices, opportunities, and affordability for our community. This is a community goal from our Compass Master Plan. And yeah, this is why the Housing Authority is established. We all know this. But this is really what we're getting at when we're talking about this new project. So how we're gonna get there? One way is that the state passed Proposition 123 in 2023. It's the most comprehensive piece of legislation for housing in Colorado. It sets aside $300 million a year for housing. And so the previous board in 2003, or sorry, 2023 opted in to Proposition 123 to access this funding. And so when we opted in, we said, we are gonna increase our housing supply, affordable housing supply by 10% over three years. So that luckily for us, it's only 10 units. Other communities, it's a lot. 10 is a lot for here, though. And to date, we have had three units built that are, since 2023, that are at 100% area median income and below. So that fulfills three units of our 10. So we have seven more units that we need to build by the end of 2026. And then when we're talking about building housing, we want to do this in a way that aligns with our community. And so last month, we had an Anvil Community Night to establish our values and concerns and just sort of gather as a community in a neighborhood to talk about what's working, what's not working. And affordability was the number one value. Community outdoor access, open space, safety, respect are sort of the core values of the neighborhood. And then there were concerns about unfinished development, so construction hasn't happened out there for a really long time. That really impacts quality of life. And if it's continuing to drag on, that problem just persists. And so that ties into dust. There's a lot of uncovered undeveloped land out there. Snow routes were a concern, traffic safety, particularly speed, parking, and then just a general lack of greenery in the neighborhood. And so we really took this community needing and values and tried to incorporate them into our design for the project so that we can best integrate it into the community. So the project is on lots 15, 16, and 17. There's a line here. This is 15, this is 16, maybe 17.
Can you show me that again, please?
Yes. 15, there's a line right here. This is 16 and this is 17. And then sort of the anatomy of Anvil is this green berm over here is referred to as the burrito. And this inside is called the donut. And sort of developing housing inside of the donut is what we refer to this as. So this is Martha Rose Street. This is Fifth Street. So the development will straddle Martha Rose. And these lots were donated to us by the county. This project, which is super awesome. So who is this project serving? So this is gonna serve households that make 80%, 100%, and 140% of the area median income. I put these numbers up here just so that we know sort of what that looks like. The lower to higher range with the income levels is the one to two-person household. This goes up to like 30 and 400 households, but for the sake of this presentation, we're just sticking with these two. And the price difference here is sort of assuming this is 30% of income towards housing and this is 35% of income towards housing. Proposition 123 allows you to go up to, sorry, 35% of your income on housing. So there's a bit of a difference. This number might be wrong now that I look at it, but this is sort of serving our essential workforce, our teachers, service providers. And then we'll get into this in a second of sort of the unit mix. But you know, there's a lot of energy in the lower-income housing. There's market rate and then there's what's referred to as the missing middle, where you can't quite afford market rate, but you make too much money to qualify for affordable. All of these numbers here are subject to change. These are 2024 numbers. This project is happening in 2025. So all of these are gonna change in the spring, but this is, these are what, this is what we're assuming now. So who's making this happen? The Silverton Housing Authority is the project owner. We released an RFP in the spring and we wanted to partner with a developer that has a lot of experience in developing affordable housing to sort of leverage our knowledge of the community and the local needs. And in their proposal, the plan includes working with Fading West, who is a modular manufacturer in Buena Vista. And I will, oh, one more slide, one more slide. But it also takes, it takes more than just us. So so far to date, San Juan County has contributed funding. Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has contributed funding. CHAFAA through our conceptual plan, Town of Silverton. And then sort of our future funders are the Colorado Health Foundation, the Colorado Division of Housing, and San Miguel Power Association and CHAFAA. And so I will let our tributary development team introduce themselves.
I'll start. My name's Jack Jones. I'm a partner in tributary development.
Hi, my name's Bleecker Seaman.
And I'm Scott Simmons.
So I'll give a quick overview on tributary development. This team, the development team, was a part of Fading West. We spun our group out of Fading West to focus on frankly, what we had been doing with Fading West, which is really focusing on housing in Colorado mountain communities. We are, have a particular focus on public-private ventures, like we're planning with you all and looking really to provide that missing middle housing. We maintain a strategic relationship with Fading West, so we'll, for this project, we'll, our plan is to use them for the modular manufacturing. We're gonna work with them as our GC as well. So we continue to enjoy a very close relationship with them. You know, it does allow us to look at other options if the project warrants. But in the case of this project, we think joining the team with Fading West is what is the best value for the project. On the slide, it identifies a couple of our current projects. So today, we're active here in BV with an apartment project. We've got a similar apartment project with the County of Gunnison. Next up would be this project with you all in the town of Silverton. And then we've got a development site controlled with the city of Durango. That would probably be a late 2025, early 2026 project. So we're excited about the opportunity to work with you all.
Thank you. And then I did just wanna do a little bit of historical context here. So this is a sketch plan of Anvil from 2008. So this is when the neighborhood was first plotted and cleaned up by the county. And so again, we're looking at lots 15, 16, and 17. You can see that these are attached units. And so this project has been half, has been a vision for a very long time. In 2022, we received some technical assistance funded by CHAFAA to create more of a modern conceptualization of Anvil. And then that brings us to the Anvil Town Homes. So there's gonna be three total buildings. Two buildings are gonna be four plexes and one building is gonna be a single-family home. There's gonna be three, sorry, six two-bedrooms, three, three-bedrooms. And those are kind of dispersed across our different AMI levels. The single-family home is gonna be at the higher AMI level. And I guess when we wrote the request for proposals, we were looking for a design and a plan that maximized the like best use of this land without sacrificing livability and quality. And so this is what the team put together for us. And I'll kick it over to you guys.
Yeah, so this is the site plan rendering for the three lots, Lot 15, 16, and 17. And like Anne said, we're really trying to balance livability with the best and highest use for the site. The lots are tight and we're trying to fit the right balance of unit mix and parking and also landscape. So you can see on Lot 15, that would be your single-family detached unit with a garage space and then a backyard space showing with turf in the back. So that would be that higher AMI unit and that'd be the first, first unit you would see as you drive up Fifth Street. And then Lot 16 would have four units, all, they would all be attached townhomes. The, the unit closest to Fifth Street would be a three-bedroom unit with that front entry facing Fifth Street. And then the remaining three units attached would be two-bedroom townhomes. And then similarly, across Martha Rose Street on Lot 17, you would have a three-bedroom unit closer to Fifth Street and then three more two-bedroom units facing Martha Rose Street. I say, I just highlight a couple of features of the site plan. You know, you're seeing some sidewalks along the right-of-way. I think those are great from, from a pedestrian circulation and safety, but also they define the, the space and they will create kind of an entry experience to the neighborhood as well as some landscape and street trees that really help to kind of highlight that as a nice entry into that Anvil neighborhood. The parking, the off-street parking spaces are tucked kind of away from that entry area at that intersection. So there'll be four spaces on Martha Rose Street for Lot 17 and four spaces on Martha Rose Street for Lot 16. Lot 15 will have a garage and then also a surface space off-street. So that, that Lot 15 will have two spaces. I'll add one more thing, that you know, the right-of-ways are wide enough to accommodate sidewalks, on-street parking, and still have drivelanes. So we do anticipate there to be some on-street parking because we understand that people do have more than one car per unit, but there is adequate room in that right-of-way space to, as, as shown in the rendering, to have on-street parking. But I mean, I think we really think that this could create kind of a great entry and be attractive way to kind of enter into that Anvil neighborhood.
What are the size of the lots?
The lots, yeah, the lots vary in size. The three-bedroom townhome lots would be anywhere between 1,200 and 1,600 square feet. The smallest lots would be the two interior townhome lots on Lot 17. And, and those are just under 1,000 square feet for those lots. And then Lot 15, I believe, I'm not, I don't have the exact number, but I think it's like 3,200 square foot, 3,200 square feet. So they vary, but the smallest would be just under 1,000. The largest would be around 3,200.
I just wanted to add here too, that I had the privilege of kind of walking around with these guys. We went to URAE to see some of the units that are being constructed there, right? Walk through them. And I think what's really neat about what you guys have done here is when I went to the Anvil meeting with Anne, you know, we definitely hear from residents that like, we wanna balance the need to house people. I think Carl likes to bring that up really effectively. It's like, we're trying to house people with this funding and this effort and also balance like parking and green space and snow storage and affordability and like the whole mix of it. And I think these lots are kind of wonky. The space is a little bit wonky. And so it's really cool to see, I think, what you guys have been able to do about kind of striking the right balance. I, I'm shocked at what you've been able to put on here that really strikes that good balance around, you know, not flooding the streets with cars. There's, there's ample parking here and also housing a number of people and creating that feel. So from my perspective, from when I heard from residents and walking the sites with you guys, I think this is really helpful. And just for the board's perspective, when I was able to walk through some of the sites in URAE, I was very impressed. I thought we're really, we're really getting some good value here if we move forward with Fading West as the ultimate manufacturer and construction. But I think the site design is really neat to see what you guys have been able to do here.
And I do just wanna prep you all. The second meeting in November, the department is presenting our variance request. Our, the middle lots on Lot 17 are just shy of the administrative approval just because they're a little bit too small, but otherwise setbacks are met. And Lucy will walk us through what our site plan approval process is gonna look like.
Yeah, and then here are just some representative images of the exteriors of the units. You can see on the left, these are the URAE townhomes that should be close to complete at this point. And we got to tour these with the team. These have gabled roofs, covered front porches, a kind of a nicer kind of mountain modern aesthetic. And then to the right is the single-family detached home. This one is in Poncha Springs, just south of Buena Vista. And that's a good representation of what that single-family home could look like. You know, the roof line could change and some of the, you know, the, the design aesthetics, but it shows what a, a home with that attached garage would look like. So this kind of gives you a good sense of what the exteriors could like, look like. We are working through some design iterations on exactly what those finishes will be. One thing we know is we're gonna have kind of that, that snow skirt, the wainscote along the bottom. We saw that in most of the units and we know that's a need with the amount of snow. So that would be like a, at least a four-foot kind of a metal, bondedized metal along the bottom of the units. And then we will work through porch designs to make sure that, you know, snowshed makes sense. So when you walk in your entry, you're not having to go over a big pile of snow that's accumulating because we're not thinking of snowshed. So we're working through those details and they'll be specifically designed for Silverton and for this project. But these are some good representative images of what the exterior of the units could look like. And then here's just two shots of what the interiors and the interior finishes of the units would be, would be. quartz countertops, soft closed white cabinets, black kind of hardware. All the flooring will be a luxury vinyl plank flooring, a lot of light and fans in all the bedrooms. But this just gives you a good representation of the finished quality of the interior of the units. These are photos from actual units that we, that we built.
I think one thing I'd add too is again, having been in the units, like we checked them for soundproof. You know, one in one and yelled in the other one. And I just think what was really neat about these is just the quality that folks are getting. It didn't feel like there were a lot of compromises and it struck a good balance. And you know, you can see the front porches here. Like I think this would be a neat option for having attached units that creates kind of a community feel where you have this front porch. You could hang out with your neighbors if you want or be inside if you don't want. And so the finishes were really great and, you know, these were felt very efficient, energy efficient. And that's something I think really needed in this community because we might have units that are cheaper, but they're really expensive for people to heat and run. So I think this struck a great balance here. And for people thinking about multi-units or sharing walls or whatever, the, again, I was really impressed with just the soundproofness and overall integrity in the design.
Yeah, I'll just add that, you know, the all, the units are, are gonna be all-electric. And in the picture to the left, you can see on the wall, there's a wall cassette. They would have many split systems for each unit. And right now, the factory is specifying a Mitsubishi hyperheat system, which is designed for really cold climates. And they work pretty efficiently all the way down to like, I, I mean, like 100% efficiency down to like negative five or something like that. And then they still keep running beyond that. But there's touches like that that really help to drive those, those utility bills down. You know, you don't wanna sell someone affordable unit and they can't afford the utilities to pay for that unit. So those are definitely the things that we're thinking about as we're looking at designing these units. It's not only the aesthetics, but the function of the units themselves. It's not only the aesthetics, but the function of the units themselves. And then just kind of keeping on the, with the units here, this is our floor plan for what we call the Antero model. And it's the Antero sixteen because it's a sixteen-foot-wide modular unit. From the RFP, which we probably still need to verify, it seemed like the max dimension that can go over all the roads in the passes was forty feet long by sixteen feet. So this one is thirty-two feet long. So it's a sixteen-foot by thirty-two-foot-long unit. The first floor is kind of your open common space. So it's an open floor plan design with living room, dining room and kitchen that, or kitchen. And then there's a little powder room in the corner there with an exterior door, back door. And then on the second floor, you would have two bedrooms and then a shared bathroom with a closet and then in the hallway. I believe the laundry is on on the first floor where that closet is, right adjacent to the kitchen. But they all have washer-dryers in the units. And this would be a thousand twenty-four square feet. And then the Chavino is the three-bedroom unit. These would be the end units on the townhomes and this would also be the standalone unit with the garage. The downstairs first floor would be a living room, kitchen, and then another area for a little dining room table. And then there's a bedroom and a bathroom on the first floor. And then on the second floor, you would have two bedrooms, washer-dryer area, and then you have this kind of little loft area. Or you can think of it as if there's a, it could be a home office, it could be a flex room, or you could have a TV up there you know, for like, almost like a little second family room. It becomes like a very flexible space that can be used in a lot of different ways. But this is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, twelve-hundred-and-sixteen-square-foot unit.
What are the dimensions on this? Sixteen by what?
This one is thirty-eight feet.
Great. And then, so moving on to the budget, a couple of the sources that we're going to use on this. I mean, really, it like, looking at this project from kind of a zoomed-out level, it costs a certain amount of money to build homes, whether, whether they're being sold as affordable or not. And I, I think we're really fortunate in this scenario that we're, you know, we're going to be able to tap into, we're hopeful, a good amount of subsidy for a nine-unit project like this. So I mean, obviously discussing tonight, a big chunk of that is the DOH grant from, from Prop 123 funds. That's going to be a really important piece of subsidizing these units so they can remain permanently affordable to to residents in the workforce here. Another, another piece that's also a really, really important component of this project. And we're, we're really grateful that Anne has kind of kept the ball rolling on this is, is working with the Colorado Health Foundation. This is, this is foundations. This, this is a foundation that they're able to go up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit for units at or below eighty percent AMI. So that's, that's part of the reason why we're including a good number of units in this project that are at that eighty percent median income. We're, we're super grateful because that, that honestly adds a lot of subsidy to a nine-unit project like this. And we, we feel pretty good about the kind of the, the way that this is going to move forward, just because for, you know, it's a lot of money for this project, but compared to honestly, some of the other projects that are going after funding from this source, it's not a lot of dollars for them. And this is actually below their threshold of what would require kind of board approval for, for these funds. So some other things that we're showing, I mean, obviously there's, there's the land that's being contributed, you know, originally from the county and then via the town and the Silverton Housing Authority. That, that value in there, we're including as an estimate, just making sure that the town gets credit for those matching funds here. We're also including some, you know, some fee waivers, which, you know, will, will still be discussed with the town. But, but ultimately wanting to kind of show and make sure that the town is getting credit for, for their contributions to this project. That just kind of improves, improves optics honestly for, for the way that DOH looks at funding these projects. We'll also go after some heat pump rebates from the local power association. It's not a ton of dollars, but again, every, every dollar helps on a project like this. I mean, on the, so on the right side here for project uses, obviously there's, we have a much more detailed budget. It's kind of being kind of forced into these, these categories. This is directly from the DOH spreadsheet that we're using in our application. Some things kind of I called out here, that, that construction piece includes both the factory manufacturing from Fading West as well as all the site scope. So think things like excavation and foundations, all the fit and finish work that happens onsite, making utility connections. We're carrying what we think is a pretty, you know, conservative but accurate budget for a lot of our soft costs, financing fees, reserves, and then making sure we leave money for closing costs. I mean, I think we generally try to approach projects of being a little bit more conservative on the front end because one, things always happen, but two, we, we want to leave room for, for funds and projects like this that, you know, really kind of go toward the, the livability of these units. You know, we're certainly not just building for the absolute cheapest we can. And I think we, yeah, I, I, there's, there's certainly cheaper ways to build, you know, the same number of units, but it's really, as, as we've been discussing, kind of striking that balance between long-term quality that, that homeowners are ultimately going to be really proud to own, while still being able to meet the affordable price points that let people live in this community.
And then I just want to point out that the like, three hundred thousand dollars from the county is sort of the, like, appraised value of the land and not actually what we paid them. But it is such a significant contribution that we included it so that we showed how much of a contribution this was.
And that's why it's kind of the, is that the same matching number for the acquisition cost that you cited, right?
Correct. And one, one last thing I'll add here that I forgot to mention. So the way that DOH calculates, you know, technically what is affordable is not necessarily the way that we and then working with Anne and the Housing Authority want to show it. So you'll see that, the green text in the bottom right. Technically, we could, I mean, Anne addressed that thirty percent versus thirty-five percent of income assumption earlier. For, for our modeling and underwriting right now, we're not assuming that any homeowners are putting thirty-five percent of their income toward housing. So we're, we're selling at price points that are what we think more realistically affordable. So there's technically by DOH and CHAF underwriting standards, these could be sold for a higher amount than what we're, we're currently budgeting for. But again, we want these to be realistically affordable to, to people living in Silverton.
And this is our timeline. So right now, we're working on our application to the state. That is due December second, which is conveniently the Monday after Thanksgiving. So we're working towards that. And then we'll get into this more on the next meeting. But in order to reserve our space in the Fading West production line, we need to do a ten percent deposit. And so I'm going to present some different financing options on the twenty-fifth. And that deposit is going to be refundable based on getting the award of the Proposition 123. So if we don't get that grant funding, then Fading West will refund us that deposit. Because if we don't get the Prop 123 funding, this project doesn't work.
That's a huge benefit.
Totally. And so in January, the Colorado Health Foundation grant is invite-only, but I've established a pretty good relationship with them. They came out two weeks ago. And they intend to invite us. So we will work on that application in January. And we'll sort of find out about Prop 123, Colorado Health Foundation grants, kind of around the same time, January, February. And so that's sort of the stop-go point. If we don't get this funding, this project does not work. And I transparently do not have a backup plan. I haven't identified where else we can get these funds. So that'll be our stop-go point. And if it's a go, we'll enter into a formal development agreement with Tributeary Development. We will get a construction loan in March. Break ground in May. Factory time is sometime in the second quarter of twenty-twenty-five. And then yeah, still this, this transportation of the modular units, like we don't know exactly when that'll be, but before snow flies sometime late summer. And then we're hoping for completion in December. And once we get into the new year, we'll really get into what the application process is going to look like, the timeline, what are the qualification standards? We're just not there yet. Because this project, it, we don't know yet. And then we are going to try to do some pre-sales of the units just to keep the cash flow going during the construction loan. But again, all of this does not have a timeline. So anyone who's interested in this project, keep your eye out on our website and sign up for our email list because that's where all that information is going to go through. Anything you guys want to add on the timeline?
I, I mean, I'd only say, I think one of the benefits of modular and why we, why it's a key part of our strategy is you can meet this kind of a timeline. So we're talking here that, you know, site groundbreaking would be as soon as we can, once the ground is ready. But we're targeting May. So really, when you think about it, the construction timeline compared to a site-built home, you know, is taking place from May to December. So it, it's really a benefit for locations that have a short build season.
Okay, so that kind of wraps up what we have prepared, but we will take questions. But yeah, we really designed this project to meet our community goals of increasing our housing, integrating well into the neighborhood, you know, designing a high-quality home for people. And this is our path to addressing our affordable housing crisis in Silverton. And it also is our path to fulfill our Proposition 123 commitments. So I think I'll open it up to the board first. And then when we do open public comment, I will, we can take those and it can be, I'm comfortable with it being more of a Q and A with public comment, just depending on timing, if that's okay with you all.
Questions, comments from the board?
So what are you estimating the monthly payments will be on these houses?
So in I guess Jack, the DOH spreadsheet doesn't quite say what the monthly payment is, correct?
But it is. Yeah, it, it doesn't. I mean, we could, we could certainly get those numbers. I don't have them offhand because, I mean, candidly, that's going to depend a little bit on where interest rates are or when the ultimate homeowner purchases them, what their down payment is. Anne, I don't think you touched on it tonight, but whether or not Home's Fund is, is playing a role in down payment assistance will also impact it. So there's, there's a variety of factors there, but I could, we could certainly look in what the range would be for, for these price points.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you go back to the slide that had the the income levels, effectively, we're pricing at thirty percent of those income levels. So, you know, at the lowest levels, I think we were looking in the sixty-thousand-dollar range. So that's corresponding at thirty percent, that's eighteen thousand for a year. So, you know, at the risk of doing math quickly, and it's fifteen hundred a month, basically, for those at the, at the, at the eighty percent range. And so it scales up there, but, but it is thirty percent, you know, that is, as Jack said, we have the ability to go up to thirty-five percent, but it, thirty percent is defined as thirty percent and below meets the definition of, of, yeah, of, of being at an acceptable rate for housing costs.
Yeah, and I pulled out sort of the calculator that we use to generate the sale prices and it's included in the packet as well. It assumes the interest rate, the mortgage term, the down payment percentage. And it's also assuming homeowners insurance, taxes, private mortgage insurance. And yeah.
So the townhome units for the fourplex, that'd be the eighty percent and hundred percent. And then the single-family would just be the one forty percent AMI? I hope we get this funding. I love the design, especially having a garage for the single-family home. It's a really beautiful project. I think a question I had for the board, I mean, Anne has put so much time into this and I think really well utilized the survey and really thought a lot about the mix of units, you know, who are we selling these to? We're not just building a bunch of units for like families of four, because that's not really necessarily the target people we're trying to sell to. And so you all wear a lot of different hats, you know, a lot of different people in town. And I'm just curious, kind of your guys' gut check on sort of these mix of units and who we're targeting and how you guys kind of feel about that from the different perspectives that you all have of the people you know, the people you employ, the roles you have. Well, how does this sit with everybody?
For like myself and my husband personally, we'd be attracted to the single-family homes. To have like a little bit more of that privacy. Yeah, that's just us.
I was just about to say that too, Amy. We didn't disqualify ourselves from applying for these homes. And those look great.
And I think too, the thing to keep in mind when we're talking about unit mix is, I believe our guidelines, you know, if you have a three-bedroom, that means you're renting it to other people. You, you can't get a three-bedroom as a single person, right? That was in our guidelines. And so remembering like a kind of the bedroom mix and the unit mix of what we're talking about here and the type of people that are interested in buying them.
I also appreciate the effort to put in some landscaping, a little bit more greenery for that area, because we know it's a bit bare.
And are those landscaping costs included in this really preliminary budget? Yeah, great.
I know that's a big request from the current residents of Anvil, so it's really important.
We need some soil. What you really need there is soil. It's just rock. That's my mountain too. I live on a mountain. It's just rock. I think what's neat about this and what I saw in the Anvil meeting, you know, I was sitting over there and our family's been in this community for about four years and seeing the progress that's been made on housing in just that short time, right? I know it doesn't always feel like that to the community because there still is such a housing need. But just looking at what's happened at Anvil in a short amount of time from the, you know, administrative process of the annexation to actually units getting built, whether it's market rate or some of the subsidized ones. And I think that's really exciting to see. It's turning into this like highest concentration of year-round residents over there, right? It'll be the place we all trick or treat because like everybody's open, everybody's there. So I just want to acknowledge the progress that has been made, you know, predating Anne, predating Gloria, but the work you guys have carried forward and the idea, again, it's only ten units, but like ten units makes a really big difference in this community to just ease that pressure of what people are facing. And it's just one next thing to really knock out. So I'm really hopeful that we can get this funding because it, it would really, again, we're small, but these kinds of things make a huge difference in just the capacity, the livability, the ability to recruit and retain people for like the important positions we have, you know? I mean, Tyler, how many people have you lost with the ambulance association? Because they just have nowhere to live. Like, it's hard to staff new important things in our community without options like this. So that's my appeal to the funders.
What's beautiful about building homes that are for sale is that once people buy these homes, their rental unit frees up. And we've already seen that happen with the homes in Anvil already. with the homes in Anvil already. So we're seeing other rentals pop on the market because the residents have moved on.
Yeah.
Um, and I do, and maybe Scott and Jack and Bleecker, you all can speak to this about, um, I think, well, what I've heard in the community and what I would request of the community, or maybe like suggest something to think about is that um, single-family homes are artificially, their value is artificially raised based on zoning history that has happened in the United States. So it's harder to build single-family homes. And so I think the quality of these homes is so high. And it's a really affordable house, but this is a really awesome way for someone to enter homeownership. And like, it's taken us one, two, three, four years to build six single-family homes. And this will take us one year to build, well, less than that, once we actually start building them. But we're going to build so many more units all at once that like, it just makes a lot more sense for our community. Um, and our zoning code is changing, our land use code is changing so that we can allow sort of this gentle density. Um, but yeah, maybe Scott, oh, what I will say is when we visited, Bevan was in one unit and I was in the other and we closed the doors and he screamed and I did not hear him. So we did test the soundproofing of these units, but um,
Scream loud?
Yes. Maybe, I don't know, you guys can talk to the building specs about like the space between the units and the walls and sort of the soundproofing measures there. So that you have privacy in these smaller units or attached units.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that, you know, traditional construction for a townhome, you have that fire-rated wall, but it is literally just a wall. And with town, with modular, each one of the homes is its own separate modular unit that's being set on a foundation. So what you end up getting is a redundancy in your interior walls where you have two full walls with the air gap. So there's a typically a one-to-two-inch air gap between the units. And that double-wall assembly with that air gap does create a lot more sound buffer than you would have with the traditional construction of a townhome. Um, we, at the farm neighborhood in Buna Vista, we bought homes from some other manufacturers in Nebraska. And they did not build them this way. They actually built the boxes, so they ran not with the unit parallel, but perpendicular. So you would have one box that had five kitchens or four kitchens. And we had a lot of issues with sound transmitting between the units. But with this, with the way that we're building our townhomes, where each home is its own kind of standalone unit and then another unit beside it, we don't have that same issue with uh, sound transmission um, like between the two units. Um, I would also add the covered front porches are, I mean, so I, I lived in one, in, in the farm and it's a front porch neighborhood. People hang out on their front porch. It builds community. Although they are small lots, um, you do, you get a sense of community just in the way that the homes are designed in the neighborhood. So I think it's going to fit really well and it's a great way uh, to get into homeownership. And we've seen that where, you know, larger homes that you have to sell for a higher price point, just sit on the market. Because it's harder to enter into that. And that's what you get a lot of times with the single-family home. Because the lot is, the lot burden on that single-family detached unit is so much higher. But with townhomes, you can hit a lower price point. It allows uh, someone to enter into a, into, enter into home ownership that maybe couldn't. Um, so we've definitely seen that in other developments that we've been part of.
I think that's such a key point here too, because the town has these lots, they're kind of unusual. You know, it's kind of the best and highest use and housing the most people. And I would just, I can't speak enough to the quality that I saw when we were there. I just walking around there thinking of multi-units, it just felt like this is really a space that people could be. And it felt like it fit the character and vibe of Anvil. And I thought the multi-units, again, they were just, like, the size is not that dissimilar to the single-family when we think about like a comparable two-bedroom. Um, and I just thought the quality was really neat and it could really create a neat community there. Um, you know, and my own personal example, the first house my husband and I bought was a condo, right? That's what we could afford. That was our entry point. Um, was a multi-unit. And it really provides that option for people like, like Anne said, to kind of start that process of homeownership. Um, and building that credit and that history and all that piece. And it's really can change people's lives for a long time. So, um, I'm really excited about these options and the multi-units I thought were really pretty cool.
And other questions or comments from the board?
Anne, thank you for your work on this. And I especially appreciate that all the materials I've been seeing from the Housing Authority have Spanish language options as well. And I think that's really, really important. So thanks.
Yeah, it's super exciting. I uh, have an interest list for a homeownership class that's taught in Spanish. And I just keep getting texts every once in a while that's like, hi, I'm interested in the Spanish-speaking class. And it's just signals to me that this is important outreach and work. And um, I think it's being appreciated by the community. Um, and we had a homebuyer education course on November second and it sold out, which was really awesome. Um, I got pretty high course evals and people said it was really helpful. Home's Fund taught it and they offer a down payment assistance program. Um, and so we were, I'm going to suggest to the board that we require this class to take, to do the uh, homeownership application, because not only does that teach you all the intricacies of the process of buying a home, but also qual, depending on your incomes and certain other qualifications, it could qualify you for down payment of up to like a hundred thousand dollars. That's huge. These homes are like, it's like a really beautiful partnership between a bunch of different organizations to create a feasible and affordable homeownership. So, um, yeah.
It's really exciting to see the capacity you've built being in your role. How long have you been in your role?
A year and two months.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so it's been a very worthwhile investment. Yeah. Um, so if, I think any more questions from the board and/or then we could have any public comment? And then to formally, we have to do a formal resolution to apply for the funding. Yeah. Any other questions or comments from the board about this project? Okay, seeing none. Um, I, yeah, I think if we have, we don't have anybody in person, if there's anybody online that had questions about what was presented um, or questions for tributary or Anne or the board, feel free to click the raise hand button and we can promote you to panelist. Otherwise, we're just happy you're here listening. Okay, I don't see any public comment or questions. Um, yeah, so if anybody has any more comments, you're welcome to make that, or there's a motion on P's or packet.
So if we apply for these funds and receive them, are we committed then to the whole project?
Um, if we receive all the funds, um, then I would suggest to the board that we enter into a formal development agreement with Tributary Development. That would then be the green light to start.
So we're not committed even though we're awarded the funds? Is that correct?
Um, actually, if we get awarded the funds by Prop 123, we would have to do it or forfeit the funding.
Okay, so we would have it out then?
Hmm.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-03 to apply for the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Division of Housing for the funding of the Anvil Townhome Project.
Second.
Okay, motion by Amy, second by Carl. Lena, roll call please.
Trustee Alveson?
Yes.
Trustee Wakefield?
Yes.
Trustee Schnitzman?
Yes.
Trustee Gardner?
Yes.
Trustee George?
Yes.
Rep. Tim Harper?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, motion passes. Anne, good luck. Tributary partners, good luck. We're going to keep our fingers crossed. It'd be a great, like, New Year present. February Valentine's Day gift. That's what it is.
That's right.
Yeah, that's great. Um, so that, I think that was all on our agenda, Anne, right, for the Housing Authority. That's great. This is really exciting. The presentation was really helpful. Um, so let us know how else we can help to make it as competitive as possible.
You talk to anyone that says, wow, I really want more affordable housing in Silverton, have them write me an email saying, I would love to see this project happen.
Right. So you, so community comments, emails, letters and support is helpful.
Very helpful.
Great. Hey, you heard it, community.
And I'll be back in the regular meeting for more ways that the town can support this project.
That's great. Um, all right, well, the time is six thirty-six. I'm going to adjourn the Silverton Housing Authority meeting. Thank you, three from Tributary for being online. We really appreciate the support and the partnership in this and just your flexibility in navigating all of this. Really great public, public-private partnership. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. We're excited to do it.
All right, it's six thirty-six. Um, we're going to adjourn this meeting and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock for the regular Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you. Thank you. All right, for anybody who'd like to pledge allegiance, we'll do that now. All right, the time is 7:03. This is a regular meeting of the Town Board of Trustees. And I call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Malina.
Cessie Halbertson.
Here.
Sue Afield.
Sarah.
Rusty Schicker.
Yes.
Gordon, here.
Rusty George.
Here.
I put Tim Hartman.
Here.
Per Finker.
Here. Great. All right. Are there any staff or board revisions to the agenda?
Staff has no revisions.
Okay, great. Um, okay, well now open it up for public comment. We'll have in-person public comment first and then we'll move to Zoom. So if you're on Zoom and you'd like to click the raise hand button, when we get to Zoom public comment, we'll promote you to panelist. Do we have any in-person? No, we do not. Do we have any Zoom public comment? Again, if you're on Zoom, you can click the raise hand button. We'll promote you to panelist and you'll have three minutes to share your public comment. Okay, screen none will close public comment. We'll now move on to agenda item three, presentations and proclamations. And we're going to be hearing from Dan Gagels with the Chamber of Commerce. Thanks, Dan, for joining us.
Hi, good evening. I have a PowerPoint and then I also have Hillary from the Colorado Tourism Office. Then once I kind of give the agenda breakdown, I will turn it over to give a quick update about the Do Silverton Right program we are entering into. And next slide, Malina. So tonight we'll So tonight we'll talk about the Colorado Tourism Office, the Care for Colorado Program, Do Silverton Right. Then I'll do a really quick update on Visit Silverton. Some of you guys have already seen some of that data and information. And there is a video through San Juan Development's Business Summit. If you really want to hear about this tourism data, so I'll do just a quick preview. And then we will go into the Visitor Center. And is Hillary a? So I will at first turn it over to Hillary with the Colorado Tourism Office.
Email it.
What are we sharing? I don't see you're sharing this screen. Yeah, so just stop show. And then we can pick it up again. And then we're just gonna. You can actually just show this.
What happened?
It goes just like the other screen.
Sharing their email to the Zoom, not the general world. There we go.
Okay, and then you'll just. Well, that's not gonna work. Um, yeah. There we go. No, you're good.
And then next slide for Hillary.
Hi, everybody. My name is Hillary Lukowits and I'm the Director of Destination Development and Sustainability at the Colorado Tourism Office. And I'm based just over the hill in Ridgeway and pleasure to be here this evening. Diane and Visit Silverton are one of eight destinations across Colorado that were awarded a Destination Blueprint program this year. And Destination Blueprint is a year-long strategic planning program offered by the Colorado Tourism Office, which includes three main components, a destination assessment, a full day workshop, and then 100 hours of consulting. One of the outcomes that we're going to focus on for this program is a customized Do Colorado Right campaign. And it's going to be called Do Silverton Right. Silverton will be one of now 20 destinations across Colorado that's created this customized campaign. That's focused on visitor education, both in the community and on public land. So we will be developing that over the next six months. And then we'll also be having a workshop sometime in the spring to talk about the outcomes of that campaign as well as some strategic planning around tourism.
All right. Well, thank you, Hillary. I will get into them now, kind of the history of Care for Colorado and Do Colorado Right. But I really wanted to introduce the Colorado Tourism Office partners. We, I am working with a direct consultant, Mimi Mathers, out of Crestabute. And Derek, who's also in charge of like the data. So we have a really strong team in place. And then we have a localized team that's made up of a lot of nonprofits, town Silverton staff, chamber, board members, Dana sits on that. And we're kind of help steering the ship with this new program. But thank you, Hillary, for jumping on this evening and introducing yourself.
Absolutely. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for being here.
And then next slide. So the Care for Colorado, which turned into the Do Colorado, Do Colorado Right program, really came out of the pandemic, out of 2020. Not only was San Juan County technically the least impacted with humanoids in our forest, but the entire state really saw a surge. It was the outdoors that people were seeking during the pandemic. And we were really discovered, not only from outside of the state, but amongst state, right? So a lot of Front Rangers visiting each other's communities, Colorado and especially Silverton really offered what people were seeking doing the pandemic. So Colorado Tourism Office is like, whoa, timeout. How do we, you know, start to take advantage of creating responsible recreation and sustainable tourism? So that's when the Care for Colorado program came out. And they started, this was some of the first campaigns, you know, Recreate Responsible, you know, Before You Go, Care for Colorado. And so we have an organized tourism package that we share actually all around the state. And then we also kind of created some localized care for, that time it was like Care for Durango, now it's Do Your Ray Right, Do Lake City Right, and now we're doing Silverton Right. So next slide. Our collaboration really started with these initial partners. Visit San Juan County Mountain Studies Institute, San Juan Mountain Association, and Visit Silverton. And so we had gotten a small GOCO grant where we started to target information of just general visitation. And then we really started targeting individual user groups. Next slide. And so while you're backpacking, while you're biking, while you're camping, right? And these are posters, JPEGs, we did little videos. Next slide. Horsebacking, hiking, OHVing. So we really kind of targeted every demographic. And now we're going to do a very specialized Silverton, San Juan County. Next slide. Do Silverton Right. And so we are going to have, work with the Colorado Tourism Office for the next six months to really make a customized, where are our hot points? Where do we need more communication? What do we all do to get in lockstep, right? And so out of that campaign is also going to come a tourism training. So whether you're at the grocery store, the post office, the visitor center, a hotel desk, to your waitress, we are going to have this campaign turn into a training. Who is Silverton? What are our expectations? What are our number one assets? What is our basic, like our elevation, our population? I hear really crazy stuff out there, to be honest. Sometimes even training my staff at the visitor center. And so it's like, we need very organized, like, kind of like the Compass Master Plan, right? Who are we around tourism? And then what are the talking points? What do we get everyone on lockstep? We all know that people come and go in the summer. We get new worker bees every, every season, right? Whether it's winter or summer. So the Do It Right program is really going to also turn into a training so that we are all on the same page when we're interacting with our guests. Next slide. As you can see, that Do It Right Silverton kind of matches our colors, our logos at Visit Silverton. So we kind of have a look. And we really went more image-based, clean text, cue codes, and just simple communications, right? And so embracing the cue code, embracing, you know, the web, that kind of gives us more control over updating our information, like dining guide events. We also now have some co-branding postcards where ours looks like that on the front, Creative District on the back. So I started partnered with the Creative District to do cross-promotional marketing pieces. Next slide. Let's just talk about a little bit of demographics. And this I really am kind of go through because I've done this a few times. And if you really want to get in the weeds about what is all this data mean, I will send you the link to the Silverton Business Summit at the beginning of the summer. So we got some really good data. This is just our social media with Visit Silverton. Like, you know, look at who's consuming Durango, Farmington, Denver, Montrose, Colorado Springs, Phoenix, Albuquerque. That's not surprising. It is really our regional neighbors who love us the most. Women make most of the decisions around vacation, especially you married gentlemen probably totally understand that. Your wife is going to decide when and where you're going to go. And we actually see that kind of reflected in our data of our followers and our user groups. We get over a million hits on silvertoncarota.com. That is an asset that the Chamber owns. Chamber also owns the Visit Silverton social media channels. The number one thing people ask is lodging, then weather. That's why you always embed a weather widget in any tourism-focused website. Dining, shopping, and then things to do. Next slide. Our regional collaborations, we really banded together under the leadership of the Colorado Tourism Team in our regions called Mountains and Mesas. Right? And so the state kind of dissected it in, into different portions and they banned us together. And so we joined forces in marketing. We've joined forces in messaging. And we join forces in just camaraderie. We're all sharing the same guests. Guests are starting to move on, right? The trend five years ago was they stayed a little longer in Durango, they stayed a little long in your ray or Telluride. Now we're seeing actually Silverton gain a better long-term stay as opposed to our neighbors. It's reducing. And so they're moving along the Highway 550 and in the Southwest Corridor. So we're sharing our same guests. So we all need to kind of be on the same page. Next slide. The data find information that we originally got that got us into this program was from 2019 to 2023. The Tourism Office is going to wrap up 2024. Did get some preliminary data, but it was like right in the middle of October. So we really want to round out through all of October to really see live time data into the summer. And so that's going to be coming out. But look at our patterns from 2019 to 2023, right? And so you can see our average visitor stay is about a day. And then you start moving into two days, three days. And so everything's color-coded, everything's easy to digest from the information from them. And then even our days of the week, look at Saturdays and Sundays. Mondays, Tuesdays are a little bit slower. People are on the road. Look at our monthly volume, right? July is no surprise. The largest year that we've had with humans, now this isn't money, this isn't sales taxes, isn't debate about online shopping or downtown shopping. These are cell phones. Every single one of us is being tracked. So even if you have, let's say, an East Coast area code, but they know that my phone sits on that nightstand on a continual basis. Like, have any of you ever had Google Maps say, your home is one hour away? And it's like, how do you know that that's where I'm going? Or like, they're tracking us, they know our patterns, right? And so this is about human trackability. So total trips, what is a trip? A trip is literally like an engagement. Your trip could be two days, three days, unique trips. So that's 2.3 million average trips that we get. Visitor days, that means this particular trip out of the 2 million trips that we get, why does that differ than visitor days? Because there may be three days, four days. So it's each person in that car, in that family with this individual cellphone. They were here for three days, right? There's five people. That's 15 visitor days. For us, we got to think about it as an opportunity for a sale. We are in the business of tourism and we should be trying to do the most that we can once we get them in our zone, right? And so where this information will be interesting is to overlay it with sales tax. Because, just because our sales tax is fluctuating, that doesn't mean that that person isn't here. So the theory of jamming more humans into the valley, hoping to make a sale, we can start to reverse that thinking. And how do we help our business community make the sale? And make the most out of this visitor point of contact, right? And so I think just a mind shift set that we're getting all these opportunities. So how do we all rise to the occasion and actually turn it into a better sale? Average length of stay, two days. That's pretty darn good in this world. Usually it's 1.5, right? Two is actually an incredibly healthy average stay in this day and age of roamers. And then unique visitors, unique individual cell phones. You might get a customer when you work at Golden Block, you get to know that comes from Denver three times a year, right? So that's a unique customer who is a repeat customer, but that only counts as one on that 868,000 visitors. So that's kind of how you digest those kind of numbers.
And again, this is from 19.
This 2019 to 2023. Yep. So our ebbs and flows, right? If you really talk to the business community, they say, oh my God, the high watermark was 2019. Then 2020 blew it out of the water, to be honest. San Juan County grew 160% in 2020, if everyone remembers that. We were the number one county with growth of humans, trackable humans in our forest. And then, you know, it has slowly started decline. On that decline equally matches the state of Colorado's trend, the national trend, as well as the Southwest Colorado trend. And so I did get a scholarship through the Colorado Tourism Office to go to our big annual conference in Crestabute this year. And that was my number one takeaway, is sometimes we really get in the weeds, right? And we start thinking, oh my God, we're losing this, or it's slowing down then. If you really look high through the forest, that's actually the typical trend that's happening to our neighbors over in Lake City. It's happening to our neighbors in your ray, Durango, Telluride, state of Colorado, and then national travel trends. People are going back to Europe. People are going back to Disneyland. People are going to Hawaii, right? And so we had all those domestic travelers and those first-time opportunities of making a customer, because your best customer is a repeat customer, and they're now doing other things. So we're seeing that kind of trend across the board. And I found out United States is one of the most difficult states to get a travel visa. We are, people have to start working six months, right, to even get a travel visa, just to come vacation with us. So now France and Spain are actually outpacing the USA in consumer dollars for travel. The reason why Colorado Tourism Office really is in awe of European travelers is because they spend about four times as much as our domestic travelers, right? And so they're bolstering up their European budgets. Telluride actually targeted Australia. They just literally sunk a ton of money and trying, because it's easier for them to get travel visas than any other country. So we're even looking at the trends of like, what is international travel and what is happening with that? Next slide. Kind of look at the United States. It's not surprising. Those are our darkest, you know, the densest blue is our most common traveler. It's all the states that it's easy to drive here in a day or two, as opposed to booking a plane, getting to Durango, renting a car, right? We're sort of a difficult place to get to. So that makes sense that it's our surrounding neighbors that are able to jump in the car and come to Silverton, winter or summer. And then you can kind of start to look at the difference in the years of in-state visitors, Colorado visitors, as opposed to our out-of-state visitors. And that's a really interesting, that's a really interesting number. But where that changes is next slide. Trips by distance, right? So, or repeat. Look at the closer they are to us and that light blue is more of our repeat customers. That makes logical sense, too. So sometimes putting our marketing dollars into Durango, into your ray, into Montrose, come on up, Ski Kendall. Right? I met with Sarah Frieden yesterday talking about a marketing plan. Something as simple as targeting Durango, your ray, right? Grand Junction, those folks who are going to come within that kind of instant decision that, hey, I can go this Saturday. That was a blast. We can go next month as well. So your easiest consumer is actually those within a five-hour drive of you. And they tend to be your repeat customers. How many of us go to Durango to go out to eat, or go over to your ray when shoulder season to check out their new restaurant? Or when I managed Montana's here, I had regulars coming over the hill, right? And so those in that, especially the food industry, really know that there is a repeat customer right over the hill. So why wouldn't we cater some of our marketing messaging to them? Age group, income, household, education level. You know, we're getting kind of a mix of everybody. Household size, the one to two people, three to five. That's decent. That is families, right? We see that and we know that when we're in the tourism industry. Look at the repeat versus one time. One time is that spike. It's always July. It's summertime. It's the train. It's the loop. It's Highway 550. We get more repeat. You kind of see it in the ebb and flow. But look at those one-time customers. If we change our mindset, we have that opportunity to turn into a repeat customer. Next slide. Daily visitor trends. Again, look at the July spike, and it's not necessarily that predictable. Look at the 2020, right? Doesn't that make sense in the pandemic? You see that huge blue spike in September and October. That's when restrictions started being lifted. That's when we started kind of opening up a little more. That makes sense. And so you also have to kind of overlay in your brain, like, when was the 416? When was the pandemic? When did we have mostly closures in April because of the avalanches, right? And so we work with Mother Nature. That directly affects our pattern. But you can kind of see our heartbeat is fairly predictable. Next slide. So Silverton Area Chamber of Commerce. I am a part-time nonprofit director. I work for a board. I have an elected board. And then I take on, not I, Silverton Chamber of Commerce. And then I take on, not I, Silverton Chamber of Commerce, takes on a partnership contract to manage and be responsible for the visitor center, which is a function of the town of Silverton. We created that partnership in the late eighties to ensure that there was some sort of counterbalance, to be quite frank, that, you know, the town maintains a visitor center. The chamber kind of ponies up director time to offset those costs to make it happen. And so we've been doing this and it's looked all different kind of ways. Um, but these are my director duties to the left, that is independently of the chamber. And then that contract fee that I get out of the visitor center contract just goes into the general budget of the chamber. But I assume as the executive director, all those duties on the right in close partnership with um the Parks and Rec Facility Director, with Gloria, and then Dana has the town seat on the chamber board, so that we have a strong town-chamber alliance. Next slide. Brief history on the Silverton Visitor Center, that building used to be, see the powerhouse? It was right next to the powerhouse, it was Sunnyside Gold, and then it was San Miguel Power Association for a while. Um, but Sunnyside Gold always owned the property. Um, in nineteen eighty seven, they physically picked it up, they drove it down Main Street, they had to disconnect their electrical lines. It was a scene. Um, and then town owned the land at the beginning of entrance of town. And so in partnership with Sunnyside Gold, they said, hey, what was happening in nineteen eighty seven? Mines were starting to close down, the writing was on the wall, Silverton had to go all in on tourism. So Sunnyside donated the building, the town gave the land, um, built out the basement, those back bathrooms eventually happened over time. And they're like, man, we need a visitor center, we need to recruit people into this community. We've kind of got to start from scratch in our economy, and that was a part of the economy plan. And so in um partnership with Sunnyside Gold, they said, we'll give you the building, you take the land. Chamber of Commerce is like, we'll figure out how to staff it. Back in the day, it was just volunteers and, you know, not open that much and just people trying to figure it out for decades. And now here we are, still partners in twenty twenty four. Next slide. The main visitor center campus, and then we added an E C Park, that was a huge win. Um, opening up that little information kiosk this summer in an E C Park. And so what was the goal of all of those folks? And so on the right, we already started to create some independent kiosk queue codes with, there's the O H V rules, here's the Silverton, what's your dining, what's your events? Like, all those bajillion common questions we get asked every day. We're trying to kind of make it somewhat independent, so that people can seek that information on these buildings twenty-four seven. We put in these information signs on the outside of the Main Street Visitor Center and in the information kiosks. And then you see Carrie Metzler, who is my visitor center lead, um, working in an E C Park. And then this was a winter shot last year, which I just fell in love with when I drove up, because we actually had folks come off of the Nordic Trails, ski in, use the restrooms, and then talk about how they connect, could connect up on the Kendall Trails. And so I thought that was a cool opportunity to show it's not just cars that come to the visitor center. Um, they meet and greet visitors, answers questions, phone calls, emails, motion brochure mailings. We have a strong partnership with B L M Forest Service and then San Juan Mountain Association in sharing trail information, updates, permits, closures, fire restrictions, like everything that just happens around us. Um, and then it becomes a community information hub during emergencies. I, God, it was a power outage, I think. Visitor Center, we opened up, we had the only landline at that time, and people could call their families. I think it was a great divide fire. Um, but we've opened it many times for different emergencies. We also identified that campus with Red Cross to be our red card plan. And what that means is if and when we ever get evacuated, we figured out you drive through the loop, you get a red card as a citizen, you are now tracked, you're into the um system. And then, you know, that's how you get back into the community. So we have identified this area as an emergency hub as well. There's public restaurants, dumpsters, a park, a track, a baseball field, um, the water dispenser, and it's located strategically at the Y to recruit people off the street. Uh, next slide. Some of our major successes this summer, oh, my God, you guys, we cleaned out the basement of the visitor center, which was an archaeological dig for over our last thirty years. We found the weirdest stuff down there, and we got a lot of stuff back to a lot of um events that no longer existed, existed. And so it was, it was um traumatizing at best in that basement. If anyone had ever like ventured down in there, and I had been asking, I came here every year, oh, my God, can we please do something about this? And um, that was probably about ten years of asking, I've been in this position fourteen. And man, it happened this summer, and I know it cost the budget, and it was endless dumpsters. But it is beautiful and clean, and now Sarah can rent it to events to hold their, the stuff that's to be needed, and it's no longer just a junk holder, it's actually turned into a viable space. That was huge. Um, we did a redo, clean and reorganization of the whole bookstore. The bookstore actually offsets the budget deficiency that we have every single year. And so I kept building the bookstore and building the bookstore to be able to, you know, have just normal daily operations for the visitor center. So this year, Carrie and I attacked it, redid it, cleaned, reorganized, reset it, and it just looks beautiful in there. And then we did the same thing for the brochure room, which is also known as the radio room. And so we had someone come in and organize and dump and just make it a turnkey, clean little storage area and easy for the um visitor center staff to be able to restock both visitor centers. And then tomorrow, oh, my God, we are finally getting internet and phones back down in that building. The Century Link infrastructure started failing last winter. Um, battled Century Link all summer, then they finally came back with, all the copper wires in that entire building are bad. We were going to have to hire somebody to rewire it to even just have old school copper wiring. Gloria and I talked about it, no. So then we signed a deal with Vero. Then it took Vero probably all summer to get, you know, through the train, through San Miguel Power. They had to connect from the train over to the building. All that finally got done, they got actually connection over there, and the guy is showing up tomorrow to turn the building back on. Youth Centers on the second floor, they're going to get their own account, we're going to get our account back. And then um, we had a rough summer in the bookstore because we couldn't even run credit cards. We had no infrastructure in that building. Um, so our budget really took a hit this year with cash only, although we still did fairly well. Campus was amazingly maintained, this is also, it was a huge ask, I kept asking you guys. Weeds used to be as tall as, you know, your hips, you know, it was just, it was just kind of felt abandoned down there. But this year, the campus was maintained, cleaned, mowed regularly, there's guests, there's locals. It's actually really highly utilized. Um, you see kids down there running, doing their bikes, dogs, like that campus is incredibly used, and it looked good, finally. You could be proud of it. We opened and staffed an E C Park this summer from eleven A M. to two. We kind of just tested with the budget we were giving around train time, and we were able to pull that off from June first till October fifteenth every single day. So we had someone out there, out in the park, collecting data, talking to folks. Man, we had a lot of folks through. The other thing that kind of flagged from that was, you know, the showers were brand new. So that attendant really helped um Sarah and Anna deal with troubleshooting, the issues with the money, the issues with the bathrooms. It was kind of having somebody at the height of the day just down there. So we had a strong partnership with um facilities. And then, um, of course, they just helped with general questions, but a lot of where's the restroom, where's the restroom? And then shower information and then collecting data. Next slide. So visitor center operations in twenty twenty four open seven days a week, ten to three, twelve months out of the year. We do close for Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's Day, Easter, and if um the abbey danger is high. Um, we had three staff on payroll this summer, May, October, two staff and payroll generally through the winter. I've gotten down to just having one person in there, it is kind of chaotic for them when you're getting three to four hundred people there through. But that's just what we've done over the years with the budget that we got to make it happen, and it works. Um, and then just everything I have to manage, you've already heard that. We do have a part-time book bookkeeper, and then we have an actual tax accountant. The chamber is responsible for payroll, taxes, you know, filing, like, we have to manage all of that. And so we actually have a professional accountant do that, but a day-to-day bookkeeper doing the rest. And then we have a very strong partnership with San Juan Mountain Association on trail information. And then in the twenty twenty four budget, we did receive the forty-five thousand towards the main visitor center, which does cop cause upwards of, you know, late seventies, kind of depends on what was the year, what were the expenses? If I have extra money, I help pony up for something to get done in the building. Um, and then we got fifteen thousand for an E C Park, that was cut and dry, there was no bookstore to be built. I had to figure out with the fifteen K how to get that done, and we were able to get that done. So we did request originally, now this is kind of just regurgitating that memo I gave you. Um, so I guess all of that, because we've settled on something else, so next slide. So what is going to be the difference between twenty twenty five and twenty twenty four? So we're going from sixty K to thirty K. So the first thing we're going to have to do is just close an E C Park, and we will make it an independent information kiosk. I can still have the main visitor center when the main visitor center is open or myself be responsible for just kind of making sure it's stocked. Um, we'll do the television, more independent information, and just kind of still provide it, just not have the human down there. Um, and then uh, the main visitor center, so I'm losing that fifteen, right? And so I'm like, okay, that's going to shave off three point five months. That's just losing operation for three point five months. First thing I did, um, Gloria and I discussed that, was I actually closed this November to take this year's budget and money to roll over next year. So then I only got to figure out two and a half months, right? Plus, I didn't know if you guys were going to decide when you decide. So I wanted to be able to operate at least January, because I had committed to jobs and I didn't want to, you know, we were, we were kind of floundering for a hot minute. Um, so I already rolled November over, and then we knew, you know, we could close in that November again. And so our game plan, although with my bookkeeper, we still have to really, you know, the season just ended a couple of weeks ago. We, you know, closed it for, at the end of October, we are, will reopen in December. But I got to figure out, okay, so is that a little bit of April? And then do we just run until we run out, you know, hoping to make it through October? Bolstering up the bookstore, we will have our credit card machine back. So that's kind of our game plan. And so I think what I'll do is touch base with you guys in August, because July will be when we can make all our money. Carrie and I talked, do we do a fundraiser, like, what do we do to keep the doors open, right? Now, we can mentally commit to a November, but that being said, you know, recruiting five people to the Lacey Rose in November to go eat lunch is actually incredibly affected. So although we had to justify closing on a shoulder season, sometimes that's the most important time to bring people into town to help those who are remaining open, you know, just maybe get an extra table or two tables for lunch. But the reason why we have to focus on the heart of our visitation is because I need that bookstore. I need to make sales, right? And the lease sales are made in November. And so we're just going to compromise, and we're going to figure it out, just is what it is, right? Just, we're all strapping our belts, so that's my game plan. We're going to just run hot until we run out of money. Um, and we hope we make it through October, and then we'll, we'll deal. Um, next slide, oh, it's a thank you. So thank you for listening to me, I know I kind of rushed through that. Um, my presentation changed a couple of times, Gloria and I had a conversation last week, and she's like, hey, I found the thirty K. And so I do have to still go back to with the bookkeeper and really crunch that data. And then I'm going to bring that to Gloria, Sarah, and then Dana being our town representative with the chamber. And then we will make a collective decision is to like, all right, let's really strategically figure this out. But incredibly just thankful that something was found, and then I'll fight on the bookstore end to have the visitor center fend for itself as much as possible. And um, that's just what we got to do. So we'll have a great attitude, get it done, and I'll work closely with town staff to ensure that we're all making a good decision on how keeping that place open, alive, and thriving. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thanks, Deanna. Um, I think a couple of things stood out to me, and obviously I've been on the chamber board, that was my first committee as I got thrown into being on the town board. Um, but I think some things that were kind of stood out to me when you presented this a couple of years in a row to the board is, one, the number of visitors that actually come through those doors. And briefly mention it, but I think for some of the board members, if you could just.
Yeah.
And stat, like.
And just so you're aware, we are, because we just ended, right? And then I lost October for my family emergency, so now I'm here and getting caught up. But Carrie is crunching for me those like, so you know, you have twelve thousand people through in July, right? You're getting an average of three hundred to three fifty a day. And then in November, which is why I immediately picked that, we're looking at seven hundred to a thousand, right? Um, so that's kind of your average. And so I thought, well, all right, least point of contact, that's when we can close. But so in the winter, we could see five, we could see thirty-five, we could see fifty on a Bluebird day. In the summer, we're averaging like, you know, eighty in May, ending at a hundred, and then up to three hundred to sometimes a four hundred day in the height of the summer, and then trickling back down. Um, to, you know, then you go back down to like, you know, maybe a hundred and fifty a day, and then down into the seventies. And then in November, it might be ten. Um, some days, like on a Monday during a blizzard, or five. And so that's kind of the ebbs and flows of the daily point of contact. So we really tend to look, uh, we used to just kind of tend to look at a month and a hole. But where I want to dig into the weeds now is breaking down like, okay, wait, what was the pattern of Mondays? Is it Monday, maybe we close on Mondays as opposed to closing all of December? Um, where can we be the leanest possible? And really start to get into the weeds of like days of the week. And so we're going to do a deep dive visitor chart, so that when we sit down and then we can share with the board, here's why we made this decision. And so to kind of, yeah, give you that idea, it's, you know, three to four hundred in July, and then maybe, you know, ten to thirty in the wintertime. But again, their main goal in the winter is to recruit into town, go to the grocery store, go to whatever, you know, business is open for lunch. And it's truly recruiting them off the highway and into the community, um, as well as disseminating good information. And on top of those literal points of contact between ten and three, um, they're answering the phone. So we're getting from five phone calls a day in the winter to twenty-five in um the height of the summer. And then I manage the emails and that kind of stuff, because there's no way one person could do all those three. And um, you know, in the wintertime, that's why I kind of fought to keep it open, January, February, March, is because that's when people are planning their vacations. People start to book their vacations during those months. So we need to pick up, hey, when's a brass band concert? Hey, when's Red Mountain going to open, right? And those are kind of really the questions that we get. Do you think it's going to snow in June? What's the temperature going to be like? When does the train start? And so we do have a pretty consistent um rotation of questions, and then we get zingers, like really bizarre stuff, you know? We'll have people who were supposed to go to Silverthorne and kept driving and ended up in Silverton, and that's never good. That has actually happened many times.
Um, I think what it highlights, though, what stood out to me is a couple of things is, one, when I first heard the stats from the visitor center, I was kind of shocked, right? Because most of us as locals don't go park over there, and maybe we do or don't drive by and see all the cars. But recognizing that point of contact, right? And like, that phone call is not coming to the town clerk's office, right? They're not helping people plan their vacation. I know you get some of that. Um, but I just think recognizing that it is kind of a role for the town in having this service, right? And that, yes, we have this contract with the chamber, but it's really like an extension of town services and town staff.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think the piece that stood out to me, too, was the the data, because I do think it really is relevant for recognizing the number of people that we get through this valley in a given year or in a given four years. And that we need consistent information, common themes, we need ways to help our businesses turn those contact points into sale. You know, we are a tourism economy, whether, you know, that's just our nature of what our economic driver is right now. And so I just think these two points of kind of the number of people that are coming to visitor, visit us, and then like this point of contact that we have through the visitor center is really important. And again, as I've looked at the budget and been on the chamber board, thinking about ways that we could be leaner, you know, um, and ways that we could be more targeted. Um, but I think to your point, it's helpful for the new board members to know that like, the contract we do have with the chamber still only covers about half of the operational costs, right? You run the bookstore.
Yes.
Cover the other half of the operational cost.
Yeah.
Pretty, getting a pretty decent value for this point of contact service that the that the town is providing.
Um, staff member every day.
What stood out to me as a new board member is the number of people that come through there, the amount of money that it costs to operate it, and that the town's contract is only about half of that. And um, you know, it is a way that we're employing some of our older adults in the community. And just now we have this tourism data of the number of people that are. And just now we have this tourism data of the number of people that are coming through.
Well, you know, the thing that dawned on me when I went to the conferences, we're actually a network of visitor centers. It's not just about Silverton. And so it starts with the Colorado Tourism Office has six main points of entry. And then that trickles down to then every community has one and we all share information. We do cross trainings. We pass each other's brochures. We share, you know, events. And so I remember when Yuray went through this and they briefly closed their visitor center. I remember Scott Fets telling me he actually saw a difference in the winter when they closed it down and tried to go sheer kiosk. And then the town slowly revived it back when they realized it was kind of a failed experiment. Um, but it's like, we actually affect each other too. We would have been the only community without one on the western slope. Because I went to Barb Owen, who kind of coaches all of us around visitor centers as a service. Um, and that's when I kind of realized, oh, whoa, wait a minute, that like, we're actually a part of a network. And we all agree to disseminate, share and help cross promote, right? And so that's why messaging is important. Um, and just have like, who's answering the door? That's what kind of freaked me out for a minute is because it's like, well, who, who's answering the front door? Like, where are people going? And we are also public restrooms. A lot of people just come in. That is a service to the general community. Um, and the bus tours and the, you know, the train staff that come, I mean, it's really used by a lot of different people. And then the second level is a youth center. So there's like no closing down of the building. The building's got to stay alive. Because we already have the youth center. And then your third floor is kind of, you know, like your future. You have some room to grow in your future with that third floor when you address those issues. So we started with the basement cleanup, clean second floor, the school cleaned the third floor technically. And then now, you know, we can all strive for the fourth, which has some office space and conference room.
So those are the things that stood out for me from when Deanne's presented in the past and being on the board. So questions for Deanne from the board about the tourism numbers, data that was presented, the Colorado Tourism Office grant and support we're getting, or the visitor center operations.
Yeah, for the, um, the bookstore you guys have in there, is that quite profitable or?
I mean, it's making that deficit, right? You know, it's, it's actually allowing me to give viable wages. Um, it's, you know, we pay an electric bill down there. We pay the internet, we pay the phone, you know, the insurance, um, the bookkeeping. And so the bookstore, yes, yep. And we sell mostly Silverton books that we actually buy from Fetch. And then, you know, it's all Silverton related. We buy ornaments and mugs from Kelly at Silverton Camera Company and stickers from Gina. And, you know, bought some, um, T-shirts. Melanie Berger and I went in on a deal and bought, you know, mass mounted T-shirts. And so, you know, it's kind of like, where do I get my, I mean, I've had shops before, so thankfully I knew um, what to do. But I, I really go into it is like, that's how we make up that difference. So we're not coming and asking you guys for seventy K because that's not gonna fly, right? And so how do I, uh, when I took this over, it was like, how do I make it as sustainable as possible and offset those costs? Um, and it works. This summer, normally we have some rollover money, right? This summer was a little rough because we couldn't even run a credit card. It was cash only and that hurt us in sales. Um, so that's where we're like, whoa, we need to shut down for November so that we can have a little bit of rollover money that I thought would at least get us through January until you guys, you know, um, met. And then Gloria gave me the best phone call on the planet. And, um, and then I figured it off. I'll figure out how to make it work with that. That's just what we do, right? And then the Do It Right campaign, we're gonna come back to you in, um, the spring. And then we'll have the lifetime data up until, you know, October. And then we will get, now that we're in the program, we're gonna get that data, find data every single year. So we're gonna compare year by year. And then I also asked for some geo tags. I asked for Kendall is a campus. Um, we asked for Silverton Mountain. We asked for Mollus Lake. And so you can geo fence. And so they let me pick, um, some points of interest. So we can see like, and then we can adjust against like, how many people are actually using our, these areas. Eventually we'll do Bakers Park. And so now that we're in the program, we will have long-term access to this, um, cell phone tracking data. And we also got to think, who doesn't have a cell phone? Like, I mean, most kids do, but a lot of kids don't. So that's only capturing folks with a cell phone. Um, and they also warned me, don't live and die on that data, right? Because it also is technology and signals. And so don't take it like completely literal and die on that data. But for us to kind of take it as a reference and look for patterns. That was the number one thing they drilled into me is like, this is for us to look for patterns. And then we lay sales tax on there. And what I'm interested in is the gap between humans and sales tax, right? Like, do you, I saw more packed lunches this summer than I've ever seen. Harper saw them in Harmony Park. And in Nisi Park, people were there picnicking every single day. And that's not, I mean, that's just, that's, that's, it is what it is, right? And so, um, do we still have the same amount of people in this community? But maybe we're not making the sale because of inflation, politics, you know, there was a lot going on on this summer that was, that's difficult. So we're gonna, I think what'll be important for Silverton is to watch the gap between spending and humans. Right? Because we can't just jam more people in because maybe we have some weak sales. Because I'll go to one, I'll be very frank, I'll go to one business owner, they'll be like, oh my God, it's the worst summer ever. Well, I'll literally walk next to her, holy smokes, I literally had the best summer of since twenty nineteen. And they're both in the same industry, right? I experienced that here. And everyone, anyone and everyone could be an entrepreneur on the same side. Everyone and anyone could be an entrepreneur, right? We're not all cut out for that. And so I'm really pushing towards like Samwon Development and Business Resources. What's your marketing plan? What's your layout? What are your store hours? A lot of these restaurants have to close once a day in a July. We're losing a whole business leak, all of us in sales tax collections. There's lines out the door. I take pictures. Because I kind of want to, you know, like, no, guys, remember when there was literally a line going out your curb, you know? Um, we get a lot of complaints on price of food, to be frank. We get complaints about price of lodging. And, and it's not just us. It's Yuray and it's Lake City. Lake City was saying that they were maxed out in lodging, but their food sales were down, right? So humans were there, but they weren't making the purchases. So that, that's, that's where I think we have some control. How do we make a sale when we get them here? But to continually jam people into our forest because we're not making the sale is not sustainable. And, you know, we have to have a sustainable economic plan. Alpine Loop, look what's happening. Let's be frank, they're squeezing them out, right? Now it's dispersed, there's no more dispersed camping. You have to be in a designated BLM spot. They are slowly squeezing the Alpine Loop. Forest Service has already had a meeting with the commissioners that all those low campgrounds are gonna be closed or in a floodplain. Only half of the campsites are gonna be built up above. That is being slowly squeezed out. That just is a fact and we got to get ahead of it. So what do we have control over? Town of Silverton. What do we have control over? The experience in our campus. So to can, you know, I understand that in the nineties, our economic development plan was jeeping in the forest. Well, now we need to kind of start to focus on us because that is not sustainable. Lake City is putting to vote in twenty twenty-five, a countywide possible ban on OHVs. Um, and then also Lake City is putting it up for vote in twenty twenty-five, I recently found out. So they're also experiencing that turmoil. They're us four years ago. Um, and they are moving towards actually a county ban. That will affect the loop, that will affect us. And so we can sit and complain or we can understand that, look forward and start getting ahead of it. And that is the direction the chamber is choosing to go.
Thanks, Deanne. Other questions from board members?
Just, Dan's like our motivational speaker up there. I, um, Dan, this sounds, thank you for the presentation. This was great. When does this kind of training go out to the public? Like, I have one guy in particular who I'm thinking about could definitely benefit from this type of like information and training.
So April and May is our goal. We're gonna round out the Do It Right Silverton by March and then come back and present that to the, um, trustees. And then, um, really it's gonna be a tight squeeze, right? Once we all agree, okay, here's our campaign. We'll have the guts of a training and then have to populate. And so we're anticipating the rollout beginning of season in May. It's gonna be some classes. Um, it's gonna be online. It's gonna be videos. It's gonna be a manual. Um, if, if a business wants to invite, you know, the chamber in to have a discussion. And so we will kick off this summer season with that training. And most of that kind of workforce begins to be get here in May.
And I think to add on to that, you know, this piggybacks to some of the conversations that were happening earlier this summer around human wildlife interaction, right? Like, and we brought that up. So I'm on the steering committee with Deanne. And just thinking about, well, what's the local messaging that's specific to Silverton for Do Silverton Right? And, you know, making sure we have common language around how do you behave well as a visitor? And making sure that those that interact with visitors know what that information is. So even relating back to the conversations around like wildlife and trash management and refuse. Um, so there's all these ties with different things the town's trying to work on.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All I heard is they're all tracking us.
I know that kind of, I'm like, well, then I'm also like, whatever, like, they can, if they want to know I went to Durango, so what, you know?
Had a flip phone and would wrap it in tin foil. And that was like, I don't know. Thanks, Deanne. Gloria, did you have anything else to add regarding the budget? Or we'll get to that as we do our budget.
We'll get to that as we do our budget discussion. It's kind of sort of the whole thing.
Thanks for coming, Deanne. Thanks for the update. And go hang out at the visitor center sometime. Great. Not, not right now. Um, okay, we're now moving on to new business agenda item four. First is for a tap and plan investment fees for affordable housing. And I will kick that over to you, Anne. Thank you.
Um, okay, so, um, we have a tight budget as a town. And when we're talking about investing in affordable housing, the levers that we can pull as a town is waiving some of the fees that exist in development. And so that includes tap fees, um, new water and sewer plant investment fees, um, building permit fees, planning department fees. And, um, um, I think the numbers really to hit on here is that we, I didn't explicitly say what the gap is in our housing authority meeting. But it's a one point, like a one million, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar gap for the Anvil Town Homes.
Between what it costs and what we need to sell them for them to be affordable.
Exactly. And so, um, I found funding with the Colorado Health Foundation, found funding with the Division of Housing, um, but we still have a gap. And we can fill that gap through our tap fee waivers, or alver. I don't even know what to call it. Just like Town of Silverton fees waivers. Um, and this also counts as a match for a grant. Um, and so we have a pretty strong match with this fee waiver and also with the county donating the land. And so that helps our application be more competitive. Um, the actual dollar value, and this is an estimate because there's a new, there's been new fee schedules coming out. Um, but the estimate that I have now is a hundred and three thousand and forty-seven dollars value of fee waivers. Um, and I would need, this meeting, I would just need direction to write a resolution supporting this fee waiver for the next meeting. Um, and then the next meeting would be a resolution to make that happen. Um, and I talked to John about this. He should be available for questions if you guys have anything.
Thanks, Anne. Um, thoughts or questions from the board on this approach? For this idea?
So the town would be losing a hundred and three thousand dollars with? Yes. I mean, if this project doesn't happen, you're not getting that money anyways.
We're reinvesting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Another angle.
But, yes.
But how does this affect our wastewater plant and that sort of future, I guess, is what the question?
What this is, it's, it's income that's not coming in basically. Um, so if we were to charge, um, the housing authority these fees, this is what we would get. But if the town chooses to say this is an in-kind donation instead of actually forking out cash, um, then that can count towards a match.
John, I see you're off mute. Did you have anything you wanted to add there?
Yeah, I was just gonna say as far as grant matching goes, um, not having to come up with cash, not having to pay interest. Um, you know, what, what are your priorities? Housing is a priority. So are water and sewer. But, um, this makes sense to me as far as matching funds for a priority.
And if we build those units, then you have more ratepayers to share the cost.
Right. And more users.
I'm okay with drafting a resolution.
Of course, it's something to say, yeah. A good developer uses somebody else's money to do the projects, which is what you're doing. And that's a good idea. However, the town is short on money for their water and sewer project. Tremendous amount short. By giving this money away, we're basically putting the monkey back on the taxpayers that pay the utilities now. I think it adds up to somewhere around twelve thousand dollars maybe. I think that would be a small number to put onto the addition of the homes. And I think that's where it should go.
Specifically the water and sewer fees. So you're talking about not waiving the water and sewer fees, but waiving some of the other fees.
Some of the, maybe the site plan or the fine plat. Those could maybe be bypassed, but I think we need to charge for the investment fees for the water and sewer.
Thanks, Ron. Other thoughts from the board?
Could you find other funds to fill this hundred and three thousand dollars?
No, Ron, I'm puffed out. I can increase the housing prices. But again, like if we really want to create a product that is affordable to our community, I'm really trying to stick with the thirty percent of your income on your housing payments. Um, but I hear, I hear what you're saying. But again, if this project doesn't happen, you're not getting that money anyways. And if this project doesn't happen, like, I mean, I, I think there are better projects to get money from than one that's a community priority.
I think too, I think when I think about our infrastructure costs, I think a lot about how we have, again, kind of a base level of costs for a system regardless of whether we're five hundred people or eight hundred people. I mean, at some level, it just costs that much to put in a road or to put in a sewer treatment plan. Obviously, the size of that plant matters. But to me, thinking about the viability of Silverton's future, it's about people having a place to live and work here. And if you add in those ratepayers, those users, those people that have like a reliable place to live and they've clearly bought into this community, then you're adding to the number of people that are sharing the burden of that cost. So I, I hear what you're saying, Ron. We're in this weird situation where we're raising rates here and we're waiving them here. I also think what we've done with the EQRs is kind of make sure that we're allocating appropriately to the different user groups. And, um, to me, as I've thought about affordable housing through the master planning process and land use code, I think a fee waiver is like a fantastic use of like the town's administrative authority. Because it, it is cash out of our pocket, but it's also not cash out of our pocket. And to Anne's point, you wouldn't have these units otherwise. Um, so I think it's really smart and recognizing that we have such a need for this funding, if we're able to leverage a hundred thousand dollars in fee waivers, which again, it's revenue we don't realize, but it's also not cash out of our bank account in the same way. If we can use that to leverage, you know, maybe a million dollars between DOH and Colorado Housing or Colorado Health Foundation, that feels like a really smart investment to me. Um, but it definitely is an additional subsidy to the, the folks that will qualify for these units that there's no way getting around that.
The other subsidy though is coming from other sources and not necessarily like the local tax base. Like, yes, it is going eventually into the state tax base. But the majority of the subsidy is coming either But the majority of the subsidy is coming either from a foundation or from a state fund dedicated to affordable housing, and that's the bulk of the subsidy that's going into it. So town isn't heavily subsidizing this. You know, like we've leveraged it so we can get, so it's not too much of an impact on town.
And by these units being built, like if we're trying to set up the most competitive, um, application for this funding to, to your point, Anne, to access outside funding, right? Give it to Silverton, not somewhere else. Um, by doing this, then these units are built. The property values are different. They're, oh, now we now, now have more property taxpayers. Like, the benefit to town as a whole, to me, seems greater than the waiving of this hundred thousand dollars. That's kind of my view, even, even to the community as a whole. That would be my perspective is we're gaining additional property owners who are paying property taxes, who are now ratepayers um, for the utilities. And to me, I don't have the numbers. I'm not doing it in my head. But I would think that the benefit to town is potentially now greater than the cost of this waiver. But that's an opinion. I don't have numbers to back up. Lindsay, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, so I, I think, I think this makes sense and like a good way to figure out how to make this project happen. I think maybe the, it kind of on like Ron's train of thought or just like in that vein is like at some point, there is a real cost to waiving these fees. And so I don't, I just like, I think we should account for that cost because I'm assuming like the water tap accounts for labor and like time for the town, same, you know, some of these other things. So just like, what is that real cost that then the town would have to bear? Um, in waiving these fees. And I think that's probably fine and I would be okay with like approving that. But just like a way to account for that cost would, would probably be a useful accounting mechanism, like the same way that we are trying to account for the time we spend applying for grants and administering grants. Like, that's still time, even though we're raising money out of those sources.
So is your question like beyond what Anne's presented here in the packet of like how much it costs? You know, we have a cost per unit. Like, do you want to, how, what would be your recommendation or idea for accounting for this somewhere? What would you be looking for?
I guess, John, the question is like, so in the, in the water taps, um, in site plan review and building permit, you know, there's labor costs, I'm assuming to, you know, administer these taps and the permits. So like accounting for those costs, because that would be covered under these under what we're going to waive, right? And so like just being able to understand what we're actually subsidizing. Because we're not, it's like not cash out of pocket, but we're still paying for these services.
You, you're absolutely right, Lindsay. Um, so the, the tap fees pay for the labor, the fuel and the equipment. The plant investment fees, we theoretically want to put towards replacement of infrastructure. Your plants, your distribution, your collection system. And Ron is absolutely right. Sure, we need that money. And to, to my mind, this, the question of waiving these fees is about priorities. And they're both high priorities. Water, sewer and housing are all priorities. So the difficult question to you all is, is this a good investment of this, of this waiver? Is it, is this a good, good way to use this lack of, of funds? Uh, there are good points that we won't get the money at all if, if the project doesn't happen. A compromise is a potential solution, but you know that this is a big priority. Um, this is an easy way to match a hundred thousand, a hundred and three thousand dollars. So really the question comes back to you all. Can we account for it accurately? I think we can. Question of the plant investment fees, not so much. We just know that we're already lacking, uh, plant investment fees. So it's a difficult question to answer, but, um, to me, that's the question is, i- this is a priority. This is an opportunity to match.
Other thoughts from board members?
I see this as a, an opportunity to leverage this, you know, situation that we're in is both the municipal governing body and also the developer of this project. And I think that whenever we can leverage our resources to get more for what we pay, that is absolutely an opportunity we should seize, especially in a time when we're, you know, counting every dollar. And I think that there's no getting around the fact that things cost money and doing our priorities is going to cost money. And I think this is a good opportunity to get, to get the most for our dollar. So I, I think this is a, a great idea.
Heather, Jim, anybody else comments?
Oh, I'm, I'm for it. Um, I agree with everyone's statements. Uh, for me, it's very simple. Getting these completed, reinvesting on the front end or investing on the front end is actually reinvesting on the back end, because the more people that we have on the grid, you see, the, the entire town will end up seeing that cost savings long-term, long after these things are done and completed. So I'm, I'm all about making this investment. Let's do it.
I agree with Jim.
I think, Ron, you raised some really good points and, and John's brought it up as well. And, you know, we don't have the economists on site here to tell us like, okay, we're gonna give up this potential income now, but then we're gonna have more users later. Like, we don't really have a way to talk about how that all is netting out. But I'm sensing general, um, general consensus for waiving the fees. That's what I'm generally hearing. I think Ron's, Ron had a question about would we exclude some of the other water sewer related fees and not waive those? I'm hearing a general sense from the board that we like what's presented. Does anybody want to argue anything differently? Beyond that? All right, so move, we're trying to move forward with competitive application, sounds like, Anne. Um, so is there board, is there board agreement on giving direction to draft a resolution to waive these fees? Yes, I'm seeing head nods. Yeah. Okay. All right. It sounds like there's agreement to draft a resolution. Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Again, recognizing we're balancing all of these important priorities. It's very true. But I like your point, Jim. We're rein, we're investing in the front end. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Anne. All right, John, you can stay on. We're moving on to the agenda item uh, for B, SIPA Grant and Subscription Maintenance for Hydrant Leak Detection. And I'm gonna kick it over to you, John.
Great, thank you. Um, this is a new agenda item, but it's something that we've been working on, uh, since last March. Um, we, I wrote a few paragraphs here about our, the seriousness in my memo about the seriousness of, of, uh, water main breaks within our system. How difficult they are to, can be to repair, uh, the resources that we spend repairing them. And we had just gotten over a, a bad leak cycle early, uh, this year. And I attended a Colorado Rural Water Conference in March, and I attended a session on, uh, leak detection. Didn't really know what it was about, but when I got in there, I, I felt that it was tailor-made for our system. Um, this leak detection system is, is hydrant, fire hydrant caps that correlate, uh, between each other to pinpoint the location of leaks. And that's essentially how we locate leaks now. Except we don't have the equipment and we don't have the expertise to do that. Uh, and we end up spending a lot of time running around, listening to hydrants to get to that point. And then we hire somebody to come down at six hundred dollars an hour uh, and spend a lot of money trying to find leaks. And sometimes it can take up to a year. Um, so these, these hydrant caps, uh, basically correlate. And they come and install them. We would need forty-eight in our system. They need to be within a thousand feet. Anyway, let me back up. Once I learned about this system, um, we contacted the manufacturer to get some more information. Uh, we got some references and we found some funding. Gloria sent over a list of, of funding, uh, opportunities randomly. And after digging into it a bit more, Steve and I realized that we could use, uh, one of those grant opportunities for, uh, this project. And we got a grant, uh, that you all will, will need to approve, uh, for is it seventy-three thousand dollars? I got it in here. Seventy-three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, now that's just free money, no matches required. Uh, they, this system requires a, a subscription. So these hydrant caps, once they're set up, they go to a, a service center, if you will, and they're monitored uh, eh, by AI. And then if AI red flags, uh, a leak, then it goes to their staff, their staff verifies it, and then they send us an email and they tell us where to dig within, you know, a, a foot of, of a hydrant. So they'll say it's one hundred and fifty-two feet from the hydrant on the corner of Eleventh and Mineral to the southeast or southwest. And then we go dig and, um, hopefully there's a leak there. And a- after having spoken with, uh, half a dozen, uh, people that have been using this system for up to ten years, um, they say it's a game changer. The difference between those systems and our systems is that they're doing it to save water and to save money. And we're doing it for water security. By being able to repair leaks in real time, we will be able to not only conserve water and save money, but if we have multiple leaks, then that puts our water supply in a serious, uh, situation. And, and we've been in that situation before for brief periods, but it gets really stressful when you can't find a leak. And then you know, if you have another fifty gallon a me, uh, a minute leak going into the ground, uh, that your water system may be compromised, your supply. So we got the grant. Uh, it does come with a subscription. Uh, those subscri- subscription costs there is listed at six thousand dollars a year. Which is, uh, maybe monetarily speaking, in the range of what we spend to repair leaks anyway. Now, this grant, if we are to also put in what I would call a match of sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars to their seventy-three thousand, two forty-eight, we would have all of the hardware and a subscription for five years. So we'd be monitoring leaks in real time. They'll send us out to fix them when we have a break. And we fix it and we move on and our water supply is secure. Um, now there's a lot of detail involved there. Hopefully you had a chance to read my, uh, breakdown on that. I'm wondering if you have any questions at this point.
Thanks, John. This is a great example of why trainings and professional development is a good use of funding. Can turn into seventy-three thousand dollars and a great solution. So thanks. Questions from the board about this idea option and kind of the subscription framework?
Hey, John, what's the battery life on these? Do you, do they have any idea?
Yeah, they're getting, well, they're getting ten, ten plus years out of them. The technology is ten years old.
Great. Um, did you talk to the people about where we lived and what the issues are with snow and, and would they think that would work in our community?
Yes, and one of the reasons why I like this system is because it works best on metal pipes. We have ductile iron that are smaller in diameter. And we have six inch ductile iron mains, which is considered very small for water mains i- in a municipality. Um, that was one of the things that I really liked. They don't, this system does not work well on plastic pipes. Uh, we don't have any plastic mains in our system. Um, but yes, we, uh, they're, they're confident that, and the people that we've talked to, most of them, they were, they did, it wasn't a snow thing, but there were some communities that had, had cold, cold environment.
If the fire department had to get into there and, and take one of those caps off, would that affect the, the antenna on the end of that?
No, it's all enclosed in the cap. Um, I, I discussed it with, uh, Clark Dameron a- at one point, and he didn't seem to have any problems with it. Uh, he's more concerned about, uh, just your concern is, are there any fire department operational concerns? And it's essentially just like a regular hydrant cap in that respect.
If we dropped the, um, program with them and restarted it, is there additional charge for that or is that, would it just?
My, my understanding is it's an annual cost. And so if we dropped it, let's say after five years, we're like, well, we don't like it or it's not a great investment. Um, and six or seven thousand dollars a year is too much and we need to cut some in our budget. Then you could drop it and then you could pick it up again in the, the next year.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any additional charges for that?
Not to my knowledge. That, that's a good question and I can look into that.
Okay.
But i- it's pretty simple to set it up. Once you have the hydrant caps in place, basically they just subscribe you or unsubscribe you like any other, uh, like turning the power on, turning the power off, except simpler, because you don't have a meter to hook up all that.
Okay. This is, I guess, a question for Gloria. Is that sixteen thousand dollars in the budget for next year?
It is right now, yeah.
Good, good.
And John, clarification, I think I heard you say that, that sixteen thousand number is kind of close to what we would spend on leak detection or leak mitigation often anyways. Would, did I mishear that?
Yeah, uh, I used the, the six thousand.
The six thousand, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's a, what a one-year subscription cost is right now. And I'd say that some years we spend more than that, some years we spend less, some years we have more leaks, some years we have less. Some years it's easier to find, some years they're more difficult. Uh, so that, our, our cost varies. But to me, based on my experience with our water supply, an annual ongoing price in that range or more is acceptable with respect to keeping your water secure.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah. So if we're in that end, yeah. So what we're getting this grant, again, which is fantastic, is the hardware and two years of monitoring. What we're really deciding is do we want to pay some more upfront costs to have the subscription price to get the discount for a five-year subscription?
That's correct. And it, it's not a significant discount, but it is, you know, it's, it is something. Um, and I think it would be nice to, to get it while we have it, just go ahead and jump in. For, for sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars, essentially, we're getting five years of, of leak detection for that. If it doesn't work, it's worth a shot, you know? I fully believe that it works. Uh, American Water uses this, um, in a lot of their systems. And American Water is the largest water distribution, uh, company in the country.
Thanks. Yeah. Other questions for John? Budgetary or technical?
Mueller people come down and help you install these?
They, installation is part of the, uh, hardware cost. So yeah, they'll come down and install them.
And if we need tech support later on, how close are they to us?
Well, th- they're hydrant caps. So if we're having a problem with a specific cap, we could put it in the mail.
Okay. And then what's?
All this, all the other stuff is, is computer-based online.
So if you have a problem, they deal with you over the phone? Is that the way it works?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Other board questions?
No, it looks great. Way to find a, a grant to, to fund it. Love it.
I'm seeing nods, head nods. Yeah. Any, any opposition, any other concerns?
I think it makes sense to go for the five years of monitoring with all the equipment to have the town match of sixteen thousand and end up saving us more in the long run, I think.
So we have the sixteen thousand included in the current budget plan. Um, I'm arguing against honing up that money now for the subscription price for five years. Any opposition? Desperately needed. I'm hearing lots of agreement. So let's see. Um, so we need to make a motion. It's on page fifty. There'd be a motion to enter in the grant agreement and then give staff direction to draft a resolution. So it sounds like there's staff direction to draft the resolution for the twenty twenty five water budget to include the monitoring. Would someone like to make a motion to enter into the grant agreement with SIPA?
I'll make a motion to enter into the grant agreement with SIPA for funding to purchase and install the leak detection hardware and monitoring subscription and give staff direction to draft a resolution for the twenty twenty five water budget to include leak monitoring support for additional three years.
Second.
Byron, motion made by Amy. Um, Melina, roll call please.
See, Alberston?
Yes.
Just to wait field?
Yes.
Just to Schnicker?
Yes.
Yes, just to George?
Uh, sorry, yes.
What's him, Harper?
Yes.
Cranker.
Yes. Great, thanks, John. Thanks to you and Steve for really seeing this and making it happen.
Great, thank you.
And this department, didn't we get our housing authority website from SIPA as well?
So that's Colorado um State Internet Portal Authority.
Yeah. Those are your state tax dollars at works, folks. All right, thanks, John. Um, we are moving on to agenda item um for C. Thanks, John, for staying. This is Mineral Creek Homes Water Wastewater Infrastructure Acceptance. And I will kick this agenda item over to you.
Okay. Um, this is a a kind of a technical order of business. Um, so when you have a a property owner, uh, I guess we're not calling this a development, but when you're talking about the it, it is infrastructure installation down on the south side of town. Uh, Mineral Creek Homes has installed uh the infrastructure down there. And town code requires us uh after the final inspection uh to accept and assume full responsibility of the new lines and improvements and the warranty bond. Um, no, that's that, that's after one year. I'm sorry, I'm ahead in my memo here. Um, we will accept and assume ownership of the new mains and improvements by motion. So I'll just give you a little bit of background. I did do a final inspection. But um prior to the final inspection, we were inspecting, inspecting their work, uh, the pipes that they were putting in the ground, the manholes on a daily basis or prior to burial to make sure that they met our development standards and specifications. Um, so then I did a walkthrough with them and had a few other items that were outstanding uh that we wanted to have kind of cleaned up on the site. Um, and they, they're good to go from my perspective. And that's what the code states. So technically, uh, their war- one year warranty period should start. Um, and by motion, you should accept and assume ownership of the, of the infrastructure. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Well, how come do we accept ownership before the year is up?
Okay, so what you're doing right now is you're accepting ownership, but you're not accepting full responsibility. So if anything is to go, if if the infrastructure is to fail within the next year, then it's their responsibility to fix it. After the year is up, if it has not failed, then um it will be our responsibility.
Right. Do we have a bond with them or are we just?
We do.
Okay. And then did we get some photos or did we check pressures or anything on that?
We, we have, we have all that data. There's quite a bit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ron. Other questions from the board? procedurally or otherwise?
And and John has been working with an engineer to oversee this entire project, so you all know.
I'll make a motion to accept and assume ownership of the water and sewer improvements installed by Mineral Creek Homes in blocks eighty five, eighty six, eighty seven, and eighty eight, and start the warranty period as of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Roll call please, Melina.
Justy Halberston?
Yes.
Justy Wakefield?
Yes.
Justy Schnicker?
Yes.
Justy Gardner?
Yes.
Justy George?
Yes.
Tim Harper?
Yes.
Cranker.
Yes. All right, thanks, John. Thank you. Thanks for all that. We'll move on now to five agenda item five, consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? If you had major questions, we should have pulled it out, so hopefully you don't. And just to know the sheriff's contract in there, we discussed at a previous meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Melina, Carl, and second by Amy. Roll call please.
Justy Halberston?
Yes.
Justy Wakefield?
Yes.
Justy Schnicker?
Yes.
Justy Gardner?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
What's him, Harper?
Yes.
A cranker.
Yes. Great, thanks. Um, moving on, agenda item six, staff reports.
I have really good news. And the lift passed its final inspection and will be open for the season on Friday, December twentieth.
Ooh.
So, um, early bird passes will go on sale on Friday to November twenty ninth, and Sarah's working on an article with the Standard um with more details, so I just kind of wanted to put that teaser out there, but
People were asking me about early bird passes. I was like, I call Melina, I don't know. No, I said call on it.
Does this mean we can start selling advertising on the lift?
Oh, yeah, she's, she's already recruiting for that, so if you do want to sponsor a chair, you can contact Sarah. It is a thousand dollars a chair and we've already sold a couple, so.
Oh, it's very exciting.
Luck. Take it home?
Do not get to.
Um, and then I also sent you dates on February for a retreat. Um, thanks for those who've already gotten back to me, but hopefully planning this far out, we will be able to find that time.
Um, find it, you must show up.
Okay, and then the timeframe for accepting applications for the Public Works Director position will end on November twenty fifth. Um, so we are, I'm just putting that out there in case anyone's contemplating putting in a, an application.
Any other questions on the staff reports? You have John's in there as well. And the Benidorm Peak update is in there too. Questions, comments, great. Awesome, great stuff going on. All right, moving on to agenda item seven, committee and board reports. How many committee meetings, right? Right?
I actually, I
Had one today.
Yes, um, it's funny, it was like right before this meeting, um, was the Snuggle Energies Bo- Energy Board. Um, I need to actually write up an email because there are a lot of really good resources that came out of today's meeting, both funding, energy code, um, opportunities for like trainings on energy code. Um, we're seeing a lot of the money from IIJA and IRA starting to be distributed um through like, they basically had a competition of which entities across the US actually are going to be distributing that money, and that is happening now. Um, so we can start applying for that. And Gloria, I was gonna ask if you have looked into some of the direct pay options that is coming out of the IRA, because those are starting to um like happen, and they actually sent over some really good resources on free consulting services for nonprofits and towns to figure out the best use of direct pay. So I can, I'll send that over after.
Yeah, I was given the notes from that meeting, so I'll look through that as well.
Cool. Thanks, Lindsay. Thanks for being on that. It's good to have a representative there. Yeah. All right, any other sneaky committees that we don't know about? Just kidding. Um, all right, moving on to trustee reports. Or that we forget, were there, we, not that we don't know about it, we just forget to put them on the agenda.
Yeah. It was funny, it was like right before this meeting, so that's why it was kind of weird.
Yeah. Um, trustee reports. I had one thing to share, so I'm not putting it on the formal committee meeting because it's not like formal committee, but um, I have started attending the NERDS meetings, which is the Natural Resources Damages Funds Meetings. So basically, that's funding that will come from the Attorney General's Office. There's like a selection of trustees at the state level that will award this funding post gold king spell. So it's basically, the town of Silverton is eligible. It's basically for sites that are not part of the super fund sites, right? So the town of Silverton is eligible, down the valley folks are eligible, and we kind of I've had various folks from town sit on that, so Sarah Frieden and I are kind of paying attention to those meetings and really just sort of being a um advocate for what the towns needs or ideas might be around that. The main, there are a lot of restrictions around how those funds can be used. It has to be like along the waterways. Um, a lot of it is like building boat ramps in Durango and launches and that kind of stuff. But um, it can be used for things like wetlands restoration. It can be used for like river cleanup, trails, things along the river. So it could fit really well as a way to leverage funding for like the Animus River Corridor Project or any type of wetlands restoration down on the river floor, river valley. So Sarah and I are participating in that just to kind of make sure that the town doesn't miss out if there are funding options we want to go after, because this is kind of a once in a lifetime sort of thing of when these funds would be put out, and it's about three million dollars um now, and I think about three million later. Um, and so just making sure we have a seat of tip, we can advocate for ourselves if we would like. So stay tuned.
Nice little footbridge over Smith Creek?
I mean, we can hope, and you know, ideas around how can we make this into something for that area, right? Or leverage it for other funding. We're all about stacking funds. To Ann's point, we're gonna stack funds. So um, yeah, if we're not at those meetings or presenting projects, then we don't really get to ask for any of it. So stay tuned. Once we have more idea about what specifically we might have the capacity or pursuing that's aligned with our priorities, then something would come before the board, but um, yeah, the deadline for like, basically Trout Unlimited is kind of convening this whole group, and it kind of comes out of the Animus Stakeholders Group from years ago, twenty years ago. But um, the deadline for kind of putting together a whole package that these trustees at the state level will want to see will be in like May. So we're kind of with this group trying to decide go or no go on what kind of projects would all be a part of this one application. So the town of Silverton would be a part of this larger project plan or application. So stay tuned. But yeah, bridges, or probably this couldn't fund bridges, but if we could turn this money into match for something else to fund bridges, you know, I don't know, let's get creative. Yep. So that is, just so you all know, NERDS meeting, which my kids thought was a hilarious acronym. Any other trustee reports?
I have a trustee report in that I persuaded the board last meeting to do a potluck before Thanksgiving. So this is my pitch to, for Gloria to of on Friday in the update, we'll do what is everyone bringing for their potluck meal?
Oh.
So we make sure we have enough food um for that meeting before Thanksgiving. It should be fun, and remember invite your people. So just think about what you want to bring.
Thanks, Lindsay. We're glad Jim and Tyler survived summer.
Right.
It's November. We survived summer. You're here.
Really?
Appreciate it, yeah.
Still good?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Any other trustee updates? Okay, public health announcement, get your flu shots. No fun to have flu. Um, all right.
Also, along those lines, we have limited hours right now, so just anyone who's looking for a vaccine, just give us a phone call. Um, it gets forwarded to our emails right away and we'll give you a callback.
Thank you. All right, moving on to continued business nine A. Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five, resolution adopting comprehensive financial management policies for the town of Silverton.
Great, so when I started my position in twenty twenty one, um, there were no financial policies in place. So I threw together our purchasing policies that were adopted shortly after I started. Um, but I always intended to have something more comprehensive that would guide us through our finances and be something that um, granting agencies would actually be like, oh, that's a decent policy, maybe we'll give you money. Um, so an iteration of the policies before you were presented in August of this year to the finance committee, and again last month. Um, we've been testing them out as we go through our budget. Um, and as we're developing better grant tracking, standard operating procedures to ensure that these policies meet our needs. Um, a lot of federal grants will require uh some of the language in these policies. Um, so this is kind of a model policy um that started out with the, actually, the town of Pagosa gave it over to me. And then I've been tweaking it ever since to try and make it um fit Silverton, so I'm hoping these policies will help with future employee and trustee onboarding and just general organizational structure.
So the finance committee saw this, and I had to say, as a new member of the finance committee and board of trustees, I was like, oh my gosh, this would have been so helpful when I joined the board and the finance committee. So I think it was long overdue, and thank you for seeing that gap. Like, I didn't know what to ask for, for what I needed, and this was exactly what I needed. Um, so I think it's really great to have this. The finance committee reviewed it, provided a bit of feedback. I think one comment Gloria, you didn't add, but I wanted to highlight was that you've kind of used this document during budget season to kind of see how does this work? Does this make sense for us? I have this policy in here, what are the implications? And so I think it's kind of come to a pretty good place. Um, but again, this is the first time the whole board is seeing all of it, so open up for a vigorous debate and discussion. Or questions? Thanks for putting this together.
Yeah, staff gets trained on it on Thursday if it's adopted. It'll be an exciting staff meeting.
I think the biggest things to call out for s- for the board is like, do you feel, does anyone feel like these kind of priorities or um, wait, this is a policy document, right? This kind of directs how we think about our budget, how we spend money, how we evaluate new programs or projects, new requests that come to us, and so kind of a gut check, do you feel like the objectives of this policy, like on page one thirty four, feel right? And then when it goes through kind of the overall policies that we would adopt when it comes to capital improvements or reserves or a balanced budget, like, does anything in here feel like, oh, that's not really quite my priority that I would think of when I think of our financial management policies? So any thoughts or questions on the priorities or the way we would use this to guide?
I think it's a good policy. I think we need to vote on it.
Great.
That's it is.
Go ahead.
It just, it's a, you know, it's a combination of institutional knowledge and best practices and common sense, and it's probably something we should have had for a long time, and it's good they're getting to it now.
Thanks, Carl. Lindsay, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, this was me getting to the details. Um, I don't know if the finance committee talked about this, but I talked to Gloria about it this morning. It made sense to me. Um, on the note of operating policies of not restricting revenues, that is something like kind of flagged to me of there might have been places like the TIF funding where that might want to be earmarked specifically for road improvement projects. Um, but that seems to be sort of addressed in the capital improvements project, like planning that's coming and some sort of like specific allocations, but not necessarily earmarking it in restricted funding. Um, but I know like kind of in, in my other world, that's a place where like we would have had that funding restricted for programming. Um, and that's always helpful when you're trying to figure out your priorities in spending. Um, so they're just like of notes the, on the restricted revenue section there, I thought. That was my big question, but Gloria explained it to me, so.
Did you have anything to add there, Gloria?
Yeah, so um, best practice, especially for local governments, is not putting that money into a a place where a future board can't prioritize it. Um, and so that's why you utilize things like a capital improvements plan um, and other mechanisms to allocate those funds. Because if right now, if we were in this budget crunch and we had three or four different funds that we could pull from, but we couldn't pull from them because they were restricted, um, that would really limit us in our flexibility to be able to provide services for the community. Um, so I I definitely hear Lindsay on that one, and at a federal level, Um, so I I definitely hear Lindsay on that one and at a federal level, that's definitely where it's at. But in much smaller budgets, it's really difficult to do that and have that flexibility at the same time.
Yeah, and we have some of those funds, like the Conservation Trust Fund, right? Where it's very specific, but when we're thinking as a board, like if the board seat now says, hey, we want, we're gonna, we need to raise fees. When we do a whole lot of, we're going to raise fees for X and we're going to make sure that those fees raised are only directed to X. Well, that need for X could change in ten years or in whatever, and that fee continues to get collected and now that revenue is really restricted. So yeah, I hear both of that.
But with the TIF and funding, that's interesting because I am looking at separating out a streets fund at some point. So an entire streets fund would be separated out if we get enough revenue in that to be able to invest, basically.
Right.
Um, but our capital improvements plan is kind of a cool way for us to prioritize rather than um restricting the those funds.
Yep.
It's more of a priority discussion.
And there's a balance around like charging the users for a certain service for that service and keeping the funds unrestricted. Yeah.
And this is just within our general fund, of course, or within each fund, I should say. Um, so there's still, the water fund still stays the water fund, the sewer fund still stays the sewer fund. Um, and but the revenues going in aren't necessarily restricted within that fund.
Right? Okay. Well, I think we need a motion unless anybody has more questions.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five, a resolution adopting comprehensive financial management policies for the town of Silverton. Second.
Great. Thanks, Melina. Roll call, please.
Jesse Halverson?
Yes.
Jesse Wakefield?
Yes.
Jesse Schnicker?
Yes.
Jesse Gardner?
Yes.
Jesse George?
Yes.
Tim Harper?
Yes.
Eric Rinko?
Yes. Great. Thanks. Happy training with staff. Um, I know Gloria is very excited. Hopefully the staff can share.
I've been wanting to finish this for so long without that Band-Aid in place.
All right, moving on to nine B, twenty twenty five budget update.
All right, um, as I've been reviewing our finances through our budgeting, I came across an error that we made in twenty twenty three um when I was preparing the twenty twenty four budget. So our fund balance for all funds are taken from previous year's audit. So in twenty twenty three, when drafting the twenty twenty four budget, I looked at the twenty twenty two audit number. Do you follow that for the twenty twenty three beginning fund balance? In twenty twenty two, uh, we put five hundred thousand dollars into CDs for a reserve fund. I made the assumption that those CDs were not liquid assets and thus not included in the ending fund balance as we do not include li- non liquid assets in the ending fund balance. I found out from our accountant this year that the CDs are considered liquid and are included in the ending fund balance. Um, this led to an overspending in twenty twenty four. I caught this mistake in time and I'm confident that we won't have any liquidity issues with our cash on hand, but we are close. As you can see from page two of the agenda memo, uh, I think that's page one fifty five in your packet. Um, our projected ending fund balance for twenty twenty four is six hundred and four thousand three forty four. This is only a hundred and four thousand three hundred and forty four, a hundred and four thousand three hundred and forty four in cash. And five hundred is in CDs. So this is not adequate. There was an emergency this year. Um, so we would like to strive to keep our ending fund balance at about twenty five percent of the projected revenue. Um, that's somewhere like eight hundred and, I I think that's nine hundred thousand. It's in your memo.
Mm hmm.
Um, so this was a mistake, but I have a solution. Any questions before I continue?
And the number for the twenty, we went for reserves, which would include five hundred thousands of CDs plus cash, we would be striving to have a balance of nine hundred eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty nine.
Correct.
Yeah, thanks.
The solution that I've come up with is to keep the administrative fees calculated the same as last year. Uh, which these were reduced, but not to the extent we've been discussing. Fortunately, with the recent proposed rate increases, our water and sewer funds will not go into the red, as you can see from page three of the memo. I had scheduled the capital improvements plan that was presented to the finance committee last month. Be adopted um this meeting. But given the dire financial state, I feel it would be inappropriate to adopt a plan with no funding. Um, so these have been prioritized as short and long term projects and could be adopted next year. Um, staff is still operating as planning for those capital improvements. My advice is parroting the accountant's advice um and to use the twenty twenty, and to use twenty twenty five to build back up the ending fund balance in the general fund to twenty five percent or as close as we can get. And um, that's, that's kind of what's been presented in that line item budget uh for the general fund that I presented in this meeting. Um, one more thing to point out, as I was going, combing through the budget, I realized that there was an administrative error in prioritizing Kendall Deck project over keeping the lights on and people employed at the visitor's center. Um, so you'll see that I've allocated thirty thousand from the Kendall Deck project to the visitor's center. Um, and Sarah's confident she can finish up the deck needs for ten thousand. Um, and in twenty twenty four, I guess, you know, we, we kind of saw the numbers. We gave them over sixty thousand basically to to uh the chamber to manage both uh information centers. Um, but we have a plan for that too. So um, that's kind of everything after spending some time deep diving into the budget and realizing um that the ending fund balance does include that five hundred thousand. Any thoughts or questions?
Thanks for the memo, Gloria. We're all allowed to make mistakes. When you first came on board, you find, you found that five hundred thousand dollars to begin with, potentially. Um, so again, I think this just further highlights the intentionality that we need to have in sort of setting priorities. Um, you know, every budget season that I've been a part of, there's always like hard conversations that we have to have and things that we go back and forth on. And I, I don't think there's been a budget season yet, and you two have been on finance many longer than I have. There's always something that we're thinking about what to spend on, how much to spend it on, what is our priority? Um, and I think this year is no different. It's just that we have less liquidity to work with. Um, so I think this would be a great time to kind of talk through any of the points on there as far as like the visitor's center contract, the Kendall Deck, kind of the adjustments we've made to the budget so far. Um, what this means for the administrative fees, you know, originally we sort of talked about the different ways that we can try to work towards equalizing rates for everybody and making sure our enterprise funds are solvent. And we also need to make sure that the general fund is solvent and the gen- that the general fund is getting paid for in appropriate ways from the places where we're also collecting the funding for those services and staff. So does any board members have any questions on the admin fees, what we're doing this year? And or on um kind of where we are and going forward and setting priorities?
But we will institute the changes to the admin fees next year. But.
Yeah, hopefully.
If, if, right, if possible.
I mean, our financial management policy says we review them manually.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just maybe to to summarize the impact, like, correct me if this is wrong, but basically we're saying that we're going to push back, making these investments towards these big projects that we need one year while we rebuild these critical cash reserves.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is why we're not seeing the capital improvements plan. We're not adopting it. We're not. It's a great idea. It's super great. It's really awesome things on there and we have no money to invest in right now.
Necessary things.
Right.
But.
Well, and then there is that thought of if we do adopt it, that does help with grant applications sometimes too. So I mean, it wouldn't be frivolous to adopt it. Um, but it, it's a difficult thing to look at right now when, when you need to tighten everything everywhere.
I think it's a good question for you and for staff. Is, is it helpful to have the board's kind of stamp of approval, mark of approval that yes, this capital improvements plan is what we think we want to prioritize for the next, you know, it's their five and ten year plan. Um, we, everybody knows we don't have the funding to commit to it right now, but is it, does having that plan in place even to Carl's point, even if it's not funded? Is that helpful to staff?
Yes. Yes, I think it is helpful.
Mm hmm.
Um, just for future planning. Um, so I can definitely present it at another meeting. Um, this one just didn't seem appropriate.
Any other thoughts from the board on that, on the capital improvements plan or thinking?
I think that sometimes we get to prioritize and sometimes things get prioritized. I think that we're really lucky that uh this is a an error that turns out to have not a huge impact. And I think that's a, uh, might not always be that lucky. I think that we're, we're uh in a position that this doesn't have to hurt us too much and that's a good thing. We have to push things back a little bit and that's what we have to do.
And I think it's worth noting that again, we've had strong revenues for the past couple of years. I mean, Dan's presentation earlier about visitors, we've had strong revenues and the town has been able to invest in key priorities. We've built an E C park, the first building that's been built in twenty years. Um, and we've needed to invest in Kendall, you know, maybe it wasn't all the things we thought we would get in Kendall, but there are things that needed to be done.
We have a running lift.
We have a running lift. We have a deck, like those are all huge assets. And we've, you look at our budget line items over the last three years, again, we've invested nonprofits, we've invested in grant matches, we've invested in staff, we've, I, I still feel really good about the investments that we make. Of course, we would love for our bank account balance to be higher than it is. Um, but I think to Carl's point, we've been able to make these investments over the last couple of years. And even with this kind of accounting error, we still have, we still have cash flexibility that this is not leading to, you know, huge implications at town hall or in operations. So I think there's a lot to be thankful for too. Um, but it's never easy to tighten the belt.
Better catch it now than down the line. They're already looking to tighten our budget anyways, so it just further justifies that fact.
And I think too, Gloria, making sure that you have all the support that you need, right? I know we have, we have a great new accountant. Um, it will be a shame to lose ClearGov accounting software and go back to spreadsheets. Spreadsheets are more prone to formula problems. Um, so just, you know, hearing from you what you need when you need it. Because again, you are serving as financial director and town administrator, and those are two big hats. So making sure that you have what you need during budget season and outside of budget season.
I am going to miss ClearGov.
I like going to ClearGov. It's so nice. Yeah. So um, any other board questions? So this is really, we have kind of the updated funds there. Um, but really this is the chance to give any more direction on the twenty twenty five draft budget before we move into the November twenty fifth meeting.
Yeah, after November, November twenty fifth, I will finalize the budget as much as possible. And um, well, I will finalize the budget and then um notice it for our public meeting on December ninth.
Thank you, Gloria, for all your
Yeah.
hard work to address this efficiently and calmly. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's been real calm.
Talk to, talk, talk.
Sit inside your office.
No, it's, thank you for your, your grace and um support. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for your work. All right. Well, if there's no further direction or comments on the budget that's presented, we will hear from you again at our future meeting about the budget. All right, moving on to agenda item nine C, Blair Street Grant Direction.
Can you promote Steve to panelists?
As we talk about priorities and capital improvement.
I mean, I can kick this one off. We had um our C dot representative curious about where we're at with our, our spending. We do need to be spending funds um in order to keep these funds that we were awarded. Um, and I'll let Steve take it away. He's online now.
Hey, Steve, I think you're muted, but whenever you're ready, you can provide an update.
Due to financial constraints.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, had my son letting me know here that I was on mute as I started it. Gotta love the next generation. Um, so yes, uh, the C dot folks are anxiously waiting to hear where we're going to go with um continued pursuit of these funds or, or uh use of them. Or uh, yeah, basically our, we're at a crossroads. Um, I think we made you aware of sort of continuing down the road with SGM and those costs. And that would be on top of any match. Um, and going to the RFQ route, it would keep essentially the money on the table for us. And um, we would be required to match twenty percent of a new um firms designs. In discussing with the C dot folks, they thought ten to fourteen percent of the project total is a good ballpark for uh design. Um, utilizing the additional funds needed to bring the SGM uh plans up to C dot specs. I came up with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure, meeting in the middle would put us at about two hundred uh with um fourteen percent of the project being estimated at a hundred and fifty one thousand. And that I'll note is the reduced scope of eight hundred and thirty three thousand with the additional two hundred and fifty thousand for lighting. Uh, in meeting with Bill Walco, he kind of emphasized that that is a pretty critical part of why they even have been pursuing this investment in Blair Street. Um, yes, there has been investment in Blair Street, we know as well. So um, one, one uh train of thought is really nailing down with Blair Street, the forty thousand that they've committed and um, that could say be utilized for this twenty twenty five season or year and, and then anticipating another uh, so that would be twenty for twenty twenty five, twenty for twenty twenty six. The real crux would be further on down the road in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight. If construction happens, at which point we'd be on the hook for um, two hundred and twenty thousand of say match to um the grant. And I guess I'll pause here, see if there are questions or if, if folks are tracking with me on this and yeah.
Is there a, a compelling reason to stick with SGM? I mean, this seems pretty clear cut, like we save a huge amount of money by going out to RFQ.
I agree. I think, you know, uh, a reason to stay with SGM is that we just have, say, eggs in the basket. Um, and C dot folks feel like it would be unlikely for a new firm to utilize um work that they've done. And there is maybe a little bit of, hey, look, we already have these plans, you know, I understand and believe it's our property. Um, so I agree. Um, yes, and given where budgets stand, I guess there is also the where budgets stand, I guess there is also the hey, we don't have money for any match. Um, and that's where that sort of the Blair Street has offered up 40,000 towards this project and um, there are also opportunities to pursue other grants, um, given the direction and um, one of those was announced recently uh, and has a December 20th deadline. Um, and those MMOF uh, multimodal transportation mitigation options funds um, would serve as match to these federal funds. Um, that was something I just wanted to, I definitely confirm that with folks at C dot. Um, so.
Hey Steve, do you know, uh, it sounds like you've talked to Bill Walco. I definitely agree. I've heard from other business owners and folks on Blair that like the lighting is a key component or a real need, especially for just kind of keeping that business space feel lively and safe. Um, do you know if the Blair Street Association has met again, or has had, have they had any other ideas or energy around some of these new business owners? Do you know?
They had not met as of um, when I last met with Bill Walco and I don't know if they were gonna fit that in before folks dispersed for
Yeah.
um, their winter locations.
Yeah, cause I know last time they were here with the board, we kind of all talked about some different ideas and use districts and what other options there are and the number of folks that would benefit from this project. And so I was just wondering if they had any follow up from that, but it sounds like not.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so another question I had is I think I'm tracking that we could go with an approach of allocating like 20,000 in this year's budget. Does C dot? I know C dot also wants us eventually to like have a resolution where we're committing the match fund. And so how does that timing work? Do we still need a resolution to commit the match funds in the 2025 budget?
I think they're gonna want a, a commitment for those match funds in a future budget if we don't do it in the 2025 budget.
Right. So we keep kicking the can down the road by potentially going out for RFQ or working with SGM on revised plans. That's kind of keeping the project going along. But we're still gonna have to at some point commit funds and Steve, in your estimation, you know, it's upwards of $200,000 at some point that we're probably going to need to commit um, as match and as design funds. Is that right?
Yes, in total, we are obligated to 260,990 dollars.
Okay, yep.
To match their 1,043 and some more.
Yeah. Yeah.
1,043,958.
Mm hmm.
If, if there was
sort of projecting the timing at which we would need to spend those funds. If you spent two years um, and a, a key date is the July 1st, 2026. Uh, um, as far as that is when we are supposed to go to bid um, for the project. So having the plans uh, completed, say, more in late April, I remember discussing this with the C dot folks, you know, if that's your goal to have plans developed in April of 2026 to go to bid in July. Um, that then puts you at sort of, okay, how much money would we actually say need to spend by then? And then you know, construction could begin in 2027. So just kicking, how far can we kick the can down the road? Keep the money on the table. Continue to put up money to keep that money on the table and how much that looks like going forward.
Right. And there's also to Lindsay's point earlier, we were talking about fee waivers. The town is continuing to invest staff capacity in this by pursuing additional grants and keep the ball rolling. So that is a way that the town is continuing to invest in this, that is staff time that's not being used on something else. Yes, Carl, you had a question?
Oh, I, I was just wondering if you have a, a thought, like if we were to be successful with this, the MMOF grant funding, like how much of the match requirement might that cover?
That's a great question. I I do not have an answer for you on that and I can get back to you.
The last meeting we had with the Blair Street Association, I thought we asked them to try to find other sources of revenue for this. Appears they have not done that, other than the $40,000 that they were given, they're gonna give it to us. On the other thing, um, when people have sidewalks built, they have to pay for them themselves. With this project, it appears to me that we are going to cover those costs. I'm a little disappointed in the Blair Street Association for not stepping up.
Well, I will say that I spoke to them um, the second, second or third week of October. Uh, Mario and the El Bandelbo have stepped up and they're they've joined, so it's an injection of young, younger blood. Um, but I don't think they've raised any additional funds within that original 40,000.
I don't disagree with you, Ron. I think the challenge for me is kind of again, back to this whole like have they explored a special improvement district? How they explored options where those who benefit the most would have an additional shared contribution to this, right? And that's kind of what we encouraged them last time we met. Um, I think overall philosophically, the thing I'm having a really hard time with this project in particular is related to our previous discussion about our capital improvements plan. Like, Blair Street is absolutely a prioritized project in the master plan. It's absolutely on a draft capital improvements plan. But when I think about contributing this type of match, I keep asking myself, well, what else are we not doing if we're doing this? And this board certainly, and even the previous board, like we never had a formal capital improvements plan to be able to make these priority decisions. And sometimes I think you have to go with what's in front of you. We have had staff time pursue this grant. We have had this grant opportunity. I don't deny that it's a decent leverage. But we also haven't pursued a grant for a whole variety of these things on this capital improvement plan. We just cut $25,000 to invest in a perimeter trail, which was highly prioritized by the community. Um, and so I'm just, I just continue to struggle with investing or committing this level of funding outside of a larger conversation around all of our assets, all of our capital improvements. There's a whole bunch of things in the compass master plan that are prioritized that are high priority, priorities that we haven't either put this level of staff time or pursued funding on. And so I hate turning down funding and also I'm having a hard time committing this level of funding in this context. Without thinking through our other assets and capital improvement priorities. That's just kind of my hangup. And to Ron's point, like this project in particular, I, I think I'm just the town has invested a lot of time and staff time and that is worth money. Um, and I think there's a role for the town for business revitalization, for placemaking. I think there's absolutely a role for town in like what it's done on Blair. And we did just make a huge investment in Blair. Like, that was a capital improvement that was prioritized and done. And so I just struggle again without centering this in a conversation about our other capital improvement priorities. But I hate turning down funding as well.
I will say, I think the streetlights on Blair is extremely important at the minimum. Um,
I agree.
To get, just for people, you know, it's getting dark at 5:30 PM now. And if you want to go to El Bandido's in the middle of the winter eh, for safety and also to be able to see that there is a restaurant open. Um, so I'd highly advocate for that. I do understand it's a lot of money for the whole project. It's just tough to turn down that one point, what 1.4 million dollars that we would get to invest in it. I'm struggling with that.
That's why they pay us the big money to make these decisions.
I am much difficult as this is, this has actually been on the radar since 2017. Then 2018, and then we finally, and it's previous board prior to my coming, on 2020, gave the directive and there was money allocated to that and it was spent on another project. And I think that part of it is uh, is how we've let down this project and, and we pulled the plug essentially.
I think we've been giving them hope year after year after year.
So since 2017, the Blair Street
Yeah.
have really stepped up. That's
Well, they've gone, they've, they've had representation in some of the state meetings. I think that's where um, I don't think that's where these first conversations started happening. Um, obviously we have no money at this point in time to, uh, to throw at this. And we are leaving a lot on the table.
Mm hmm.
Um, but if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. Just leave it on the table and that's it.
It's unfortunate.
Walk away and come back another year. Get everyone flashlights.
Well, I live, I think that's an interesting um, point. We'll just pass out headlamps to everybody, but um, no, I guess the question I have is it's perfectly reasonable for the scope of projects or the type of project to evolve over time. And certainly sidewalks are they're not ideal there, but it's more the connective connectivity to Green Street, I think. Like since, since I've walked that area a bit lately and since an EC park has been done, like there's not terrible continuation of flow or sidewalks. Um, in the blocks that this is even looking at addressing. It kind of breaks down the farther you get. Um, but what the reduced scope is, I was just walking around and they're not perfect, but they're also not terrible. And so is there a role to saying like, well, now maybe we really think the need is lighting? Like, do we want to revisit this and think about lighting? Um, but I don't know. I just kind of, I kind of feel like the previous board that I was on, we, we kind of kept kicking the can down the road. We didn't allocate the budget money, but we also kept kind of keeping this alive because we didn't want to turn it down. But there also is a point where you come to a place in a project where you say go or no go. Like, we are going to keep moving this forward and we're going to prioritize it for staff and we're going to tell Steve, go look for this extra funding. We're going to keep doing it. Yep, C dot, keep on going on. And also I'm sensing this also ambiguousness of like, well, we have this priority, but we also have other capital improvement priorities. So I just think at some point it might be worthwhile to just be more either clear, as Brené Brown says, clear is kind. Um, or or maybe there's a role for kicking the can down the road, but I think we're kind of in this crux position where we don't have the funding now. It's easier to push it off and say, oh, well, we'll put a resolution in a couple of years. Um, but that still is prioritizing staff time to keep working on this. So I just kind of feel like it's time to say this is the year, this isn't the year, this is the year to say it's gonna happen in some years from now. I don't know, but we also have a very new board, so thoughts?
But in order to kick the can down the road, we had to come up with 20, 20 grand.
Right, at least. I know Jim, you love to not shut the door. I get it. I get it.
Oh, no, no, no. My in comment is that I don't want to spend 20 grand.
I thought you were gonna say 20 grand is cheaper.
That's what I thought, yeah. Other thoughts from the board? I realize it's hard. It's hard to make go no go decisions and it's hard to turn down funding when we have to commit funding and we've had to make some of these decisions all day long and it's tricky.
We have had to say no to everyone this year. And this is, this is just another casualty. Terribly sorry.
We've had a lot of challenging public comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I think, you know, we, we just can't get too sucked into this, like the fear of, oh, we've, there's this sunk cost, there's this piece, like we've invested in this, we've committed. Yes, we have, but also we have to make the decision right now in 2024 with the budget that we're looking at, with the priorities that we're considering. And I think your point is really good Dana, like we're realizing that this project that we've received the funding for isn't even totally matched with what is most important for improving Blair Street, which is totally something we should do and support and we might just have to address it another time with a different project and it, yeah, it's leaving money on the table, but it's also $20,000 we don't have to spend right now. And I think that's just where we're at. Well, will this hurt us in pursuing C dot grants in the future? And like, is there a big? I don't know. Is there a big cost to not taking this and fulfilling this grant?
They'll be grumpy with us, won't they?
Um, this is my first C dot grant, so I'm not sure. Um, but we have been very transparent with them through the entire process. We have not, you know, steered them one way and then done something else. Um, so I feel like how we've handled ourselves through this with integrity, um, will be looked at favorably.
Yeah, very good. And if we have to rip off the Band-Aid, let's
Well, and, and that goes to mind, that goes whether ripping the Band-Aid or, or having C dot, you know, maybe a little disappointed in us. Um, is C dot the correct avenue to venture down with regards to lamps and streetlights? Or is it somebody else? Is it San Miguel Powers? I don't know. I mean, if we're really just gonna pursue lighting to, to help the folks on Green Street and just help our infrastructure altogether, is C dot the best avenue to venture down? I don't know.
Yeah. And again, this level of investment, we are leveraging the dollars well, but it's still 220,000 dollars and that gets us a lot of other things. We have all these other assets in town, whether it's Kendall, whether it's visitor center comp, the whole complex over there, whether it's Animus River Corridor, whether it's um, Memorial Park, whether it's parks and improvement over at Anvil, whether it's housing, like I just, I just think I've just had a hard time thinking through this Blair Street conversation outside of this context of this whole list of really important capital improvement investments and projects. And so it feels like it's time to kind of say, we don't have the budget right now. And we need to situate this within other priorities and maybe it'll rise to the top again.
Is there is there any good reason to at least, because this is open for we have to put in, we, we have to put in $20,000 this year to keep it open, right? And then we've got this, the rest of this timeline. Um, is there would it be a good idea to offer the um, Blair Street people, say, listen, we don't have the money to fund this, we're not gonna fund this. But if you can come up with the remaining money for this, then we can keep this grant in place because then there's a way of keeping the grant in place and then hopefully getting somebody else to fund it without just scrapping the project entirely.
And are you saying the rest of the money being the whole match, the two point? Yeah, yeah. I mean,
We don't have the money for it, but if you can come up with it, we can keep the grant in place.
I see a perfectly reasonable role to say the town is the administrative state power could keep having staff work on this or administer this grant or whatever, right? Like we couldn't ask the Blair Street Association to apply for and administer the C dot grant, but the town could. But what we're saying is, well, we don't really have the cash. We're okay potentially allocating staff time. Maybe we are, I don't know. Staff have lots of other things they could work on too. If they're working on this grant, they're not working on some other grant, but to your point Tyler, we can say, hey, we will dedicate staff time. We, we'll use the administrative powers of the town to implement and administer this grant, which is not an insignificant kind of in kind amount, but we don't have the cash on hand. I don't know. I mean, Fever Gloria, you guys.
We have the time or the money to work on this next year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Too, and that's, and that's a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's. It's her department.
In reading about the multimodal, the MMOF MMOF funds, I did catch that. In-kind is a potential match for those grant funds. Um there is not a requirement of match for the MMOF grant funds, given our location and. Parameters around incomes and population density and so match is waived already. Whether that is favorable to have, say, Blair Street Association, the nonprofit group, you know. Involved in pursuit of those funds or serving to, say, provide a match. Does that make it more competitive? I can't necessarily speak to that, but I did note that in reading about those, that opportunity.
Thanks for looking into that, Steve. Do you think it's, like, could we apply for the full amount of the, you know, remaining project cost? Like, is there a, you know, maximum amount that we could expect to reasonably be awarded if we went for that grant?
I really can't say for sure. I do remember having the feeling that pursuit of it could say cover that match for town, that two sixty. But I I can't, I don't want to hang my hat on it. I also. Feel like uh in talking to Bill Walco, something, you know, in the context of. Their pursuit of more funding was, you know, to just hang your hat on grants doesn't seem very sustainable, so. You know, where does this stand with you all and Deanne? Put it very directly and gracefully, like, hey, town got the grant, hey, you all, you maybe go to the train and. See what they want to ante up. And as y'all have discussed and. You know, what's been clear is they have not pursued that. You know, to the extent I think people would have liked to have seen.
Yeah, I think um. What I'm hearing from the town board is that the, that we don't really have the freedom to allocate this level of cash, cash, cash match. That's what I'm hearing from the board. I'm hearing some potential interest if there is another entity like the Blair Street Association. Like, if the message to the Blair Street Association is like, look, the town does not have the cash. We can administer this grant, but we do not have the cash funding. And so this, this kind of lives or dies here. And. I still think staff time is a signal of board priorities, right? We're still prioritizing staff time to work on this to the exclusion of something else, um which is an okay prioritization to make. We've done that in the past. Because we've worked on this for a while. So I think that's the question. What I'm hearing from the board is that we don't have the cash match. Is the board open to continuing to dedicate staff time if. A match materialized elsewhere? Or is this a project that again just really needs to be centered within this capital improvements plan that I'm looking at? That has millions of dollars worth of great projects that are all in the master plan.
And Blair Street couldn't fund the twenty thousand for this year to keep it rolling.
I don't think they, have they been asked yet or?
Last time we were in the meeting, we discussed with them to come up with a plan or start a district or something.
Blair Street has forty thousand and that's what they've committed thus far.
Twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
But then what about that two twenty, Jim?
Why? That's beyond. This conversation.
This is like NASA guys, go or no go. Everybody in their seat gets to say go or no.
My opinion is we've had town staff and run it plenty. We haven't gotten anywhere. We don't have any money. I'm sorry, I'd love to have that happen. There's a lot of money on the table. We don't have our share. It's time to let it rest.
About forty thousand from Blair Street, how about with some streetlight lights?
I think that would be up to them to. Yeah, I just, I think it's clear from all of us that. We think we should do what we can to support Blair Street and being a viable, amazing place for businesses to operate. But this isn't the way to do it right now. And we don't support them and. Doesn't mean that we can't go after other projects in the future.
Right.
And we have just made a really large investment on Blair Street. Again, they're not the redheaded stepchild. We love you. You are important, but a great facility there. Um and and again, Blair Street is on the capital improvements draft plan, like that we would think about in the future. And so I think this is not saying this is not an important project, it's just saying we don't have the cash on the map right now to make this happen. All right, well, that's what I'm hearing. So am I hearing clear direction to staff to not be directed to work on this anymore?
Would that be then forfeiting the C dot funds?
This is the go or no go, guys. This is the time to say we. Are not taking those funds. We're taking it off life support. I'm hearing whispered agreement to go in that direction. Ron was very clear and I'm hearing other whispered agreements. So if there is not any other real vocal. Should I say support for it or opposition to?
This is tough because this is literally a seven year.
Yeah.
And that part to me. Very difficult, yeah. But if Ron said it, I think we should be with Ron.
And there's this.
It will be a first. Ron said pull the plug.
I think at this point, Gloria, there's general. No go. Lindsay, I didn't give you a chance to add, but I see you nodding or shaking or, yeah. Anybody else?
Okay, we're whisper category, I think, so.
She nodding yes to save it?
Oh, no, don't do this to me, Jim. This town board all. Supports these businesses, cares about the Blair Street economy, knows how much time and energy has gone into working on this. And we all are having to make hard decisions around priorities. We've, we've said no to really important things this year. We're all feeling that pressure. We got pie in the face, you know? We're dedicated to helping Blair.
Yep, and I mean, like what Jim said too, is not to say that down the line, we can't improve Blair Street or look into different. Grants, look in different departments, looking at different options, maybe just starting with lighting and then moving up. But clearly we cannot, we cannot run this unfortunately.
Okay, that's where we are with that agenda item.
So that's your staff direction?
That's that staff direction. We don't need a resolution.
No.
Yeah.
No, we will contact Tommy.
Yep.
And let him know.
Yep.
Sorry, Tommy.
And again, I mean, staff, this is predated Steve a long time. Staff worked on a lot of different grant applications for this and we did get this grant. And so it is, it is not, I want just want to acknowledge that it's a hard decision to. It's one of those really hard decisions to make. All right, we're moving on to the last item on our agenda, public comment. We have in-person public comment. Yeah, go ahead. You have three minutes. Please introduce yourself.
Thanks, my name is Austin Lash. I live at thirteen fifty Empire Street. Quick question for the board um and for town staff. Um there was talk for Kendall of discounted lift tickets for um season pass holders last year. Um yeah, okay. What is that policy?
I don't know what Sarah has written for that, so I don't know what Sarah.
They don't have it on me, but yeah.
But yes, there, yes, since the lift shut down so early last year, there will be discounted passes.
Okay, appreciate that. And then second, just with the Blair Street discussion, um as somebody who is a Blair Street owner for over ten years. Um just felt like listening to this on on YouTube, uh I just had to come and say something for the Blair Street owners. It's, you have two business districts in this town and one disproportionately receives services and amenities that the other district does not. Um that is snow plowing, that is for 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 year-round businesses. It's very difficult to operate a year-round business on Blair Street and this is a huge. Step down for Blair Street. Yeah, I I I know, I know that you said it doesn't make, you you don't think that Blair Street is the redheaded stepchild of this town, but it is. It absolutely is. And for businesses to continue to operate and thrive on that street over there. The town really needs to seriously consider ways to help the business partners over there to make it. Because after ten years of being there, we decided that it was absolutely not worth continuing to be in business over there. We should have never started a business over there. Thank you.
We have no more in-person comment. If you're on Zoom and like to make a public comment, please click the raise hand button and we'll promote you to panelist. If you could introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead, Melody.
Hey, you introduced me. Um can you hear me?
We can.
I have really mixed feelings about the Blair Street project because they wanted it so long. And um I understand that there needs to be an improvement there. And frankly, an improvement there could lead to a, some sort of traffic pattern on Twelfth Street. So the tourists would walk on the sidewalks, maybe not in the middle of the street. But I really would like to see a buy-in. If they'd had a tax improvement district all these years, they'd have a fair amount of money. And I suggested that to Bill Walco this summer. Um apparently he didn't take that up or whatever, but I wish that they would have done that. Um a long time ago. Now, when we first moved here, and I can't find it now. There was some sort of a special taxing district for plowing the sidewalks on Green Street from. Say the Wyman Downaways, but it was a special taxing district. And so that must have been something that was approved by the business owners at the time. And now the town just plows all of it pretty much. So um I just think it's something that. They could maybe offer to step up here in some way. And if they started a taxing district, maybe you could leverage that. Income that's going to come in against what you need to have in the future. But bless your hearts, it's a tough world. Thank you.
Thanks, Melody. All right, do we have any other um online comment? If you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment, you can click the raise hand button and we'll promote you to panelist. Okay, seen none, we'll close public comment. That's the end of our regular meeting. We have a couple of upcoming meeting dates. You can check out in our packet. The time is nine thirty-eight and I adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for Zoom participants. Hi, Lindsay, bye Steve, thanks.